All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started. We've got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so we'll try to be fair but expeditious as well. So I'll start this meeting off. This is the Design Review Board. It's a regular Design Review Board meeting of the City of Milton. I'm Ken Warlick. This is a seven-member board appointed by the City of Milton Mayor and City Council, created for the purpose of holding public hearings and making recommendations. The Design Review Board reviews plans and makes recommendations to the Community Development Director for the developments except single-family residential in the Form-based code and overlay districts. In addition, the Design Review Board approves or denies demolition requests and makes recommendations to the Board of Zoning of Appeals on variances. So with that said, I would like to please ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you for that. So next, we'll kind of move on, and I would like to introduce our staff and board members.
Ralph DeVio.
Sam Yocoker, Tottenham Hock.
Celeste Jackson, Saddle Springs Drive.
Ken Warlick, Hipworth Road.
Danielle Gagny, Morning Mountain Way.
David Jackson, Bethany Way.
Ann Donella, Haybridge Lane.
All right, great. Moving on, we'll do approval and amendments of tonight's agenda. Do we have a... Yes, oh. Yes, actually, so I would be glad to announce that we can actually do the election of Chair and Vice Chair tonight. So we'll start off with the election of the Chair for the Design Review Board. Can I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Ken Warlick for Chair.
I'll second.
All right. Graciously, thank you. We have a nomination for Mr. Warlick for Chair and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. What an honor. So next, we will... Can I ask for a motion or any discussion on electing a Vice Chair for the Design Review Board?
I'd like to go ahead and make a nomination.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate David Jackson for the role of Vice Chair.
I will second that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, congrats. All right, so moving on, we will move to approval and/or amendment of tonight's agenda. Do we have any discussion or motion for approval or amendments to tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, next, approval of the meeting minutes from April 1st Designs Review Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 1st, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great. Okay, so then next, moving on, we'll start off with demolition of structures. 6A 140 Ranchet Road.
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and Board Members. So demolition review 140 Ranchet Road. Hey, we have the applicant here, Ms. Jennifer Wilson. The lot size is 2.98 acres, zoned AG1 in the rural Milton overlay. It's residential. Applicant is requesting to demolish existing house, pool, shed, and two additional outbuildings, which were currently used or previously used as animal pens. The main house was built in 1970. Here's an aerial view. And this is the site plan. I've highlighted the structures to be demolished. Here's a zoom in. And some structure photos. This is the main house requesting to be demolished. The pool. And the additional accessory structures. So criteria for approving a demolition permit, UDC Section 12.8.6C. You're all pretty familiar with it, so we'll move past this slide. So our recommendations, based on the fact that this property is not listed in the Georgia History Resources Survey or Milton's Historic Survey List, we recommend approval of the demolition per the site plan with the following comments. Complete the demo permit application. Show a tree safe fence and silt fence. If not used, water well and/or septic must be kept properly, and then any disturbed or exposed soil must be leveled and permanently grassed. Any questions?
Thank you, Rema.
Okay.
I do have a question. Do you mind going back to that site plan real quick?
Sure.
So where are these both 140 Ranchet Road? Because I noticed there's a couple different parcels or different property lines and bearings on there.
Yeah, this is actually just one parcel, and I'll go back to the GIS map here. It's a pretty long parcel, so that is just one property.
Okay. The site plan shows two. Was it two at one point? Is it two now? Are they planning on making it one or... Got it, okay. Okay. All right, any other questions for Rema? Oh, all right, thank you. So at this time, if the applicant could come forward, if you have anything to add to that? Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
No.
No, seeing none, okay. Then seeing no question for the applicant, I will open up any public comment. We have none, okay. I will close public comment. Any board discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, I will call for a motion, then please.
I'll make a motion to approve the demolition at 140 Ranchet Road.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on. Demolition of structure 6B 15245 Birmingham Highway.
15245 Birmingham Highway. We have the applicant here. Mr. Drew Claw isn't here, but we have Mr. Wilmath is here in his place. The lot size is 4.33 acres, zoned AG1 in the rural Milton overlay. The structure was built in 1971, and applicant's requesting to demolish this one structure on the property, which will include all the walls, the carport, the deck, the gravel driveway, steps, and patio. Here's the aerial view. And the site plan. Site plan zoomed in. Photos of the structures to be demolished, which is the main house and the carport. Criteria for approving the demolition permit. So staff recommends approval of the demolition per the site plan. This property is not listed in the Georgia History Resources Survey or Milton's Historic Survey List. We recommend approval with the following comments. Complete the demo permit application. Show tree safe fence and silt fence. Cap water well and/or septic if not used, and any disturbed or exposed soil must be leveled and permanently grassed. Any questions for me?
I have one.
Okay.
I remember this one from a previous hearing that we had, and it was going for a variance. For this home to essentially be in front of an existing home or a main structure, if this variance is granted and they're... Did the minor plat to subdivide it, then that variance no longer stays with this property, correct? Got it, okay. Got it, okay.
So it'll be split into two 2.194-acre lots for a single-family house on each lot.
Got it, okay. Any other questions for Rema? All right, thank you so much. The applicant want to come forward? If you have anything to add to that? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I'm seeing none, all right. I will open up for a public comment. We have none, okay. I will close public comment, board discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the demolition of 15245 Birmingham Highway.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, great, thank you. All right, moving on. Demolition of structures 6C 13890 Coward Road.
Okay, so the applicant is Mr. Scott Nowes. I don't know if he's here. Oh, he is, okay, Canowes, sorry. The lot size is 1.46 acres, zoned AG1 in the rural Milton overlay. The structure was built in 1970, and the applicant is requesting to demolish the primary residence, the barn, and the driveways. So here is the aerial view. Site plan. Here is a zoom in of the site plan. I've highlighted the structures to be demolished. Structure photos. Okay, so criteria for approving the demolition permit, we're all familiar with, so we will move quickly past this slide. This property is not listed in the Georgia History Resources Survey or Milton's Historic Survey List. Staff recommends approval of the demolition per the site plan with the following comments. Complete the demo permit application. Show tree safe fence and silt fence. If not used, water well and/or septic must be kept properly, and then any disturbed or exposed soil must be leveled and permanently grassed. Any questions?
No questions for staff?
So there's... Looked like there's a metal structure on the property that is staying, is that correct?
Yes, I believe there is. The applicant plans to, let's see. They're keeping the metal building, which is located at the back of the property, yes.
Any more questions for Rema? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, so at this time, if the applicant has anything to add to that? No, okay, great. Any questions for the applicant? No, all right. Seeing no questions, I will open for a public comment. If you have none, I will close public comment. Any discussion? All right. Oh, okay. Then I would call for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve 6C 13890 Coward Road, the demolition.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, all right. Congrats, thank you. Okay, moving on. 7C Courtesy Reviews, or excuse me, 7A V25-1214507 Cogburn Road. Again, just want to remind everyone that we are here to look at the design aspect of these variances. But go ahead, Michael.
Good evening, Board Members. The applicant owner is Brenda Ely, and the representative is Scott Reese, and the address is 14507 Cogburn Road. The applicant is seeking the following variances. Section 3.14A UDC to reduce the 60 feet minimum front yard to 56 feet for existing building accessory structure. 314B UDC to reduce the 25 feet minimum side yard to 22.7 feet adjacent north property line for existing building accessory structure. Section 3.14B UDC to reduce 25 minimum side yard to 14.63 feet adjacent to the south property line for existing building accessory structure. So the first three variances are for two total structures, and the last three variances are regarding flag lot standards, City of Milton. To reduce the 1.5 acres minimum flag lot size to 1.472 acres for an existing property. Section 225C2 UDC to increase the 10% maximum flag stem area to 13.41% for existing property. And finally, 811C2 UDC to allow an accessory structure use to not be constructed concurrently with or after a principal structure use. I stand corrected. The last variance is to allow two accessory structures to remain without a primary house on it. And the applicant details in his letter of appeal that he welcomes any type of condition by the BZA who demolished the structures prior to issuance of a future single-family home permit. Here's the subject site. You can see the 1.56 flag, and the dog leg you see right here is not in the variance scope. But essentially, this piece right here was absorbed into three lots for Linden Creek, creating the noncompliant flag. That makes sense, and I'll further explain on that through the presentation. So 14507 Cogburn Road originally was 3.032-acre flag lot owned by the applicant Brenda Ely, as detailed on the Brenda Ely Minor Plat approved by the Community Development Department reporting Fulton County in 2018. The applicant Brenda Ely sold off 1.56 acres of 14507 Cogburn Road. On 12/4/24, a community development-approved final plat revision was recorded with Fulton County, which incorporated the 1.56 acres of the lower portion, the dog leg I mentioned earlier in blue, of 14507 Cogburn Road to the rear of the three lots within the adjacent Linden Creek subdivision. The remainder of the 14507 Cogburn Road created a 1.472-acre flag lot owned by the applicant Brenda Ely. The 1.5-acre flag lot size minimum and 10% flag lot stem maximum requirements were adopted by Maryland City Council on September 6, 2023, so relatively recently.
But, Michael, before this property was replatted?
2024.
2024, correct?
Correct, yes. The two structures seeking variances predated Milton cityhood, and are used for feed and equipment storage of free-range goats and chickens on the property. Per the letter of appeal, the applicant is amenable to the variances being conditioned that a residence, when a residence permitted on this lot, the existing structure shall be removed. So here's the Brenda Ely Minor Plat from 2018, and I did a more thorough color coordinated, so you can kind of see it. Here's Lot 1, Lot 2, and the lot seeking variances right here in red originally. And this back part is what got cut off and absorbed into Linden Creek. And this is what we saw as staff when this came through, and it did not show the flag when it came through. We just saw the representation from the developer saying he owned just the dog leg and not part of the flag stem, essentially. And it was recorded and approved by community development. In hindsight, we wish we caught that there was a flag on the portion at the top, but this is what was represented by the developer at the time when this came through, the final plat process. Here is a variance site plan showing what current stands, the existing flag lot and the dog leg, which no longer is a part of the property, absorbed into the three Linden Creek properties. So they are seeking a variance to the flag stem to allow it to be bigger than 10% and to allow the 1.47 acres to be under the 1.5 maximum. And they're also seeking setback variances for the existing structures that predate the City of Milton.
Do you want to ask questions?
Sure.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so when did... When did the flag portion, when was it... When was it platted?
The original flag right here was 2018.
Okay.
And then...
So they didn't add anything to make it, to go from 10% to the, was it 13, 14% that they...
13.4.
It just, the percentage increased because they sold off that portion of it, so now it becomes, is that correct?
Correct. And then when city staff reviewed the final plat revision, it was representative that they only owned this blue portion and that there was no other lot. But when you... What would happen was, this was sold via a quick claim due, to my understanding, and they never went through the process of cutting off the flag portion of the dog leg. And that was discovered relatively recently by the applicant, and now they're going through the process to rectify the flag lot, essentially, to make it a forming piece of property. Here's a picture showing the flag stem, the entrance. And that, excuse me, they are actually, just for clarity, that is the flag stem portion, but there is a driveway where they enter on the other side, through a shared driveway easement on this side, on the opposite side of the actual property.
They will never put a driveway along that long stem?
I'll defer that question for the applicant, but the minor plat from 2018 was approved for only two driveway accesses. And if you look at the aerial, there are already two driveways. So you have a driveway for Lot 1 here, and then a shared access easement for this lot, 2, and 3 in the back. And to my understanding, there's also a shared access easement for the property to the north as well. But yes, the minor plat was approved with a transportation note stating two driveways maximum, and that's what it currently represents. But yes, the minor plat was approved with a transportation note stating two driveways maximum, and that's what it currently represents. And that's typical for three lots in this nature with two flag lots to limit the number of driveways.
Are you able to go back to the, there's a photo where that additional lot is in purple, outlanded in purple? That one. Okay, so that shows, I thought that there was a drive adjacent to that stem.
No, the dark gray is the driveway. See it right here?
Okay.
But this is from 2018. Could that have changed potentially? But the aerial shows that these, this green one has its own driveway right here. And the back two lots share driveway.
So there's an easement on that side?
Correct. Yeah, here's the driveway one, and then the easement for these two lots, the two flags. And then, to my understanding, the neighbor to the north shares an access easement as well. Through, although it's not part of the plat, they share an access easement for the driveway. And you can see from the photo, looks like there's a separation, albeit small, it looks like there's a little separation between it. But access easements are recorded through Fulton County. All right, let me continue the photos. So here's the flag stem portion. And here's the 180 degrees if you look across the street towards Cogburn Road. View to the west, which is the back portion of the property. View to the south, facing Linden Creek subdivision. View to the north. Here's the first accessory structure. And the second accessory structure. Any questions for staff or call up the applicant?
Building in the back with the white door, that's on the property or on an adjacent property? Was that the first structure you showed us?
Yes, let me confirm that. I'm going to defer that question to the applicant.
Okay.
These are some photos from Scott that might be different property, adjacent property.
Okay.
Yes.
So real quick, just let me confirm this. This variance is to, or one of the variances is for the flag stem area from 10% to 13.41, but the reality is, is that it can never be used for a driveway because it only allows two, two drive accesses for this flag lot. Is that correct?
That is correct. The public?
Variance is for a stem flag just to basically make it off of Cogburn Road, so to speak.
Yeah, because frontage is required for any lot, so essentially their frontage in the stem area can only be 10%. And when they sold off the, the blue portion I referenced earlier, it made the lot smaller, which increased the percentage.
Got it. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Michael?
So if we're looking at the design portion of this to make recommendations to the BZA, if there's, are we looking at the design of the flag lot? Because we're, there's no building for us to make recommendations.
We could speak to the two accessory structures. But yes, I would say from a design element, you could certainly speak to what encompasses a flag, if you believe 1.472 is relatively close to 1.5, you could talk about that from a design standpoint and size.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Michael? All right. Thank you. All right, great. So at this time, Scott, would you like to come out and give us a little bit more history on this?
It's been a long time, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Scott Reese with Ramala Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. Here time representing Brenda Ely in her application for variances to bring her property into conformity. So there's going to, there's a fable in this story, and I'll let you all pick and choose through. You're going to have to give me a little bit of leeway because this is a pretty convoluted tale. So as you were aware, the property was originally subdivided some years back in the division. The Ely's are retired couple that are even more seasoned than me, so I'm not going to say age, they're just an older. So this was the Lot 3. The original plan was they're going to sell Lot 2, that was their retirement plan. They have two children, they had two lots, and the daughter was going to get one and the son get the other one. So the property to the south, Mr. Linden Harris passed away. His children sold it and it went into a major subdivision, division. And while that was being platted, the health departments were taken over by the state. So this was the original configuration and was recorded. And some of the lots were not buildable because they did not have 30,000 square feet of suitable usable soils. So the developer came to the Ely's and proposed that he was going, needed to purchase their property, and he was going to fix everything with the city. He was going to take care of everything. So he demonstrated, and I'm sorry, I'm not, there we go. So he presented them with this plan. And you see kind of the, apologies, I'm not an artist, I'm left-handed. And so the area kind of highlighted in orange was his grandiose plan. So this was going to allow for the incorporation of that, for the strip in the back and make the lots buildable. And that was what he was going to do. They took him in his word. Did not happen. So first, the developer recorded this plat. You'll notice what's highlighted there. That's where city approval for all plats. You notice it's not signed? So he recorded a plat without city approval. And guess what? He did not own the property that he represented in the plat. So as you can imagine, that's not legal. So he had to go to the Ely's and purchase that strip. And once again, I'm going to handle everything. So during this process, since I had done work for them, they called me and said, you know, what happened? Said, well, since its inception, the City of Milton, if you either divide or combine property, no matter if you think you and your neighbor can just swap, it has to go through a minor subdivision plat at a minimum. Even if you combine, doesn't matter, it's got to go through. So I said, you know, what he's proposing with that, a major subdivision plat, he'll have to go through. He's going to have to show what he's buying and what's left over is conforming. Because you can't sell, if you have an acre lot, can't sell your neighbor three tents because then you have seven tents and your lot is no longer an acre lot in ag zone. It's been the standard the whole time. I don't know exactly what happened. It's what happens when the rules aren't followed. So it was sold and the the final plat was approved. But it fell through the cracks. And so this, as Michael showed you, was, it was approved on. So this is the new Linden Creek minor, I mean, a major subdivision plat, showing this strip. But the remainder was not incorporated and it wasn't handled. So the Ely's received their tax bill. They had no idea this, that the situation was such. But this is the tax map. And it shows the whole lot and what I have highlighted as the owner is the subdivision. Because it wasn't done correctly. So now they have a cloud on title. And my job is to try to repair that. And the only way that's going to happen is to bring the existing lot into conformity. So I now have this situation. So while this convoluted process was going on, the City of Milton changed the ordinance on flag lots. So instead of a one acre minimum with no percentage on stems, the new ordinance states that, and I have a little discrepancy if you read the ordinance. It says, a lot without a structure must be 1.5 acres. Doesn't say residence, it says structure. Staff interprets that to mean residence. But that being said, we're here, we're, we're not, we're not arguing that, so we're, we want to bring it into compliance. We're at 1.47 acres, we need to be at 1.5. So that's 300ths discrepancy. The flag is supposed to be no more than 10%, we're at 13%, so we're 3% over on the minimum. The Ely's have the structures they use on that lot for the chickens and their goats, and they store their equipment, lawn mowers, everything along that line. They would, those structures have been there for 40, 50 years, and they would like to hold us. They understand when a new house, that those structures would need to go. So they are, you know, in the the conditioned variance would be, that the structures would be removed. So maybe the fable is that you do hire an attorney or someone to represent yourself, but this did not happen. I don't know the full extent of, of how it fell through the cracks of the city. I mean, once again, a salesman is a salesman and things go through. So we're cleaning up the mess right now. We have a non-conforming lot that I can't get clear tax bills on. And that's where we're at, you know. The, the Ely's were more than shocked when I went through it with them, and they're very upset because they now have a, an unusable piece of property that they can't get their tax bills straightened out. So I hope you understood the gist of what went on. I will be glad to answer any questions. I'm sure I was as clear as mud on a lot of it. And hopefully you can get a, a good feeling and see that this is, you know, the whole reason for variances are hardships that weren't, you know, created self-inflicted. Now, you can say that they should have known. Most people don't know the UDC code book back and forth. And when someone brings you rendered drawings and they're building a subdivision and they call me and I tell them, well, it has to go through a division process. And, you know, they made a mistake. So that's where we're at. The driveway issue is such, as I'm sure you're all aware, Milton code is every parent parcel is limited to two driveways. So the, when this was subdivided, was two, two driveways. I know there's, the neighbor is here to speak and I can address after. Both properties were, years ago, a father-son, they shared a driveway. The son sold the property next door, the father was super upset. They built a chain link fence down the middle of the driveway. It has been removed, but there is a curve, it's separation. It was a common drive, it's split. But we are, we're stuck with the driveway per Milton ordinance. So I don't know that I can elaborate anymore. I can, I know I can answer some questions. Now, whether they're going to be perfectly answered, but I can generate some answers. So, thank you. I kind of expect a question too, so I'm just going to stand here.
I'll start. So do the, the Ely's live in Lot 2 now?
That is correct. They've all, that was the original house that was there prior to the division.
And so Lot 3 is the lot we're requesting, right?
Yes.
So is there an alternative to just remove that lot line between the two, or they want to keep it as two separate parts?
So it is, the house is separate ownership from this. I, I think it's tenants in common and this is hers, so it's not, you, you know, there are tax ramifications there, estate planning ramifications, it's not just erase the property line.
But there is already a access easement recorded to allow access to that parcel number three?
Right. It is, there is a private ingress egress access up that northern strip.
Regardless whether they like it or not, there's an access easement there. So, but they, and then my question was to Michael was where the flag stem area is? Because we already have two driveways there, there can never be a third driveway constructed.
That is, it would, it would take a reversal of existing UDC code. And I'm not absolutely positive that that is, certain things are allowed by variance and certain things are not allowed by variance. Like, I can't apply for a variance to create a subdivision of ag one zoning of less than one acre lots. I can't go before the Board of Zoning Appeals or City, that's, that's a non allowable variance. So that one, I'm not, I'm not going to venture, I know the code, but as far as an ability to go, my understanding is that you have to demonstrate a real hardship and it would have to be, like if you had 100 acres and you were trying to subdivide it with 5,000 feet of road frontage, there may be a reversal. But the three lot minors that are virtually minimum, that's, you, you, I know when I walk in that there are two access points, it's what the code says, and that's, it's not negotiable. So there is an access strip. Now, the code has always been from Fulton County that every parcel has to have, be simple ownership of 35 feet with a minimum of 15 feet for a drive. And that is created, if there was some catastrophic event, that there would be a, what? The courts do not want landlocked properties. They do, they're not going to let you create landlocked properties. So it has a catastrophic, a catastrophic event access. But the code is two driveways, parent parcel, we've got two driveways.
So regardless of the fact, it's supposed to be 10% and it's?
A maximum.
A maximum, and it's at 13 right now?
Yes.
But regardless of that, it's useless property, basically?
It's, right now, there's the, the, it's the power line.
You never put a driveway, you could never, you have to leave it clear because it has to be for catastrophic.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, never say never, but
It wasn't like they could put a fence down the middle or
Yeah. There's a power line down the middle of that, um, stem right now.
How many acres is the flagpole?
I'm sorry.
How many acres is the flagpole?
So it's 13% of 1.47. I can do 10%, but 13 is a little over mine.
So there's still, there's still an acre left in the back, over.
Yes, oh yes. Yeah, it's like 1.2. There, well, 10% of 1.4 would be. Yes, there's more than an acre in the back. And the, and this, and that was kind of the, the process that the system that was set up on flags were with no minimum or maximum on the stem. We were getting, the, the body of the lot was less than an acre and that was not. So city council in their infinite wisdom decided that, uh, they were going to put, um, policy in place. Cause they were getting many variances that were coming in for pools. There was no room. And what's the front building setback? Because everybody thinks, well, if my house is in this direction, that's the front building line. No, the front building line is parallel with the, with the primary street. And you guys have been hurt as many as I have. So they, they're trying to avoid that by increasing that. But that is a slightly over a year that that's been in. This started about three years ago.
And the existing driveway goes currently from the road all the way to the back part?
That is correct.
It's already in place?
Yes. So my, you know, my understanding, um, through many years of doing this is that your task is to recommend, um, to the board of zoning appeals, that you agree this should be approved or you disagree that it should be approved. Uh, you know, it's, it puts you in a kind of a difficult situation because there's really not any design to review here other than it is a, a non-conforming lot that's sitting out there. And, um, we've got to bring it into conformity.
Any other questions for Scott?
Um, I have a quick question.
No, no, it's for Scott.
What is, what, what do you think they will do with this property in the future? Just keep it as is and keep the two structures?
For, so like I say, they're in their eighties, um, retired and they have two children. And, um, verbally, I haven't seen the will. The will is each child gets one of these tracks. So eventually you would think it would, a new residence would be constructed there. But, you know, my dad's 96, so that may be 15 years from now. It, it is, so, but the plan is this is their forever home. They've been there many, many years. Uh, but, um, you know, life sometimes throws us curveballs, so.
Did you have a question?
Well, I think Ann was probably headed that way. If they build a, a lot, and not that this is design review, but do these variances hold in place if there's a new structure or a new residence there?
The structures per what we're conditioning would, would go away. This, the reduction in the 1.2, 1.47 and the
That would remain?
That would remain, so it would be a lot, like, we will have to do a new minor subdivision plot that the city signs off on that shows 13% in the stem and a 1.47 acre track. When that is recorded, then that becomes memorialized. And the non-conformity goes away because now it's been accepted as a buildable lot. And I'll probably, you know, it'll, it'll have to have a BZA notice on it that, that describes the non-conformity. But that will be, and once that's memorialized, then it becomes an official lot of record and.
And if they try to go back and say build a home in 20 years or whatever, if they want to keep those structures, they'll have to come for variance to keep those structures. Probably assured at that time that wouldn't go through, so, um, okay.
Um, I would reserve a right of rebuttal. I have no idea what's going to be just to, um, address if there is, um, public comment.
Okay, we will, um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of reach out to you if there's any questions or if we have any other comments for you as well. Okay, Scott, all right. Any, any other questions for Scott at this time?
No.
Okay. All right, so then, um, I will open up for public comment. Okay. How you doing, sir?
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for your time this evening. I appreciate having a chance to speak about this. Michael, I don't know if you can pull it up. Can you pull up the STEM plat where you were showing, showing that for me? And if you need to get here. I'll, uh, I'd like to kind of walk through, walk through that. So let me introduce myself. I'm Ed Phillips. I am the power of attorney and son of Jerry Phillips, the gentleman back there. He is, yes, that, that's perfect, that's perfect. And my goal tonight is kind of to explain to you, I have basically grew up on 14515, the adjacent property here. We've had to deal with a lot of driveway issues here between us and obviously the Elyes. Some of it has been very ugly, uh, to the point, um, we've almost had to reach out and get legal help because of this situation. So the point I want to make here tonight is a couple of different things. I've reached out to Linden Creek and those folks that basically live down the property line that would be affected by potentially the new driveway that's in discussion. As you can imagine, uh, through emails and working with basically Guy at Peach, at Paces Ferry Builders, they made it very clear through emails that they do not want a driveway that's going to back up to their $3 million homes. Uh, also, the home that would be, that's currently sitting right next to what I would call the core piece of the lot and obviously my father's side, I'll speak for my father, we're against having another home here. When you look at this lot, I think it's pretty clear. We've stacked basically two homes right on top of each other. 14503 is a brand new home, it's beautiful. But behind that is the Elye home, which is the 14505. There's not very much distance between those two homes. When you drive down Cogburn, it, the question I get from my peers that live in the Milton area is simple. Beautiful home on 15503, what are you doing with 15505? Is it going to be, you know, are we, are we taking that down? What's the next step there on the property? And I think most of the people in the community that I talk to that live in Milton, a lot of my coworkers live in Milton, they simply say, why are we stacking homes like this on a piece of property? Why are we looking to potentially add another driveway? Now, I know from everything was just discussed, you know, there's a challenge to a third driveway. And thank goodness, there is a challenge there for that. We've simply stacked a lot on this piece, long piece of property already. I'll speak for my dad, I'll speak for the developer who's communicated with Linden Creek owners. And they're basically, why do we want to open up access to potentially put another home on this back lot? This is a pasture, it has two old buildings. Like I said, I grew up at 14515. It is a beautiful view out of the back of that property. The last thing we want to do is stick yet another home behind basically the 14505 property. Um, and that is the case in the opinion of basically the landowner that adjoins to basically the Linden Creek property. And obviously my dad, which I've mentioned already. But I think, I think the challenge here is really on the driveway. Since I grew up there, I've looked at the easement and I'm having council currently look at that easement. The easement was actually between the webs, the previous owners who were there, and then obviously my father. And then obviously the Elyes inherited that particular easement. There's, like I've said before, there's been a lot of problems there with this particular easement. But I simply just do not feel like, in the nature of the city of Milton and what we're trying to lay out here, we simply do not need to stack three different homes here on this narrow piece of property. And our request basically is simple. Please do not allow for another third home to be built here. We want to preserve the view that my father bought back in 1989. And it is gorgeous. Everyone that comes over to his property, they simply say one thing. This is some of the most beautiful property that we've seen. What you will take away from that, if you build a home there, is basically the view that we paid for. And we, and what I honestly, my almost 90-year-old dad has earned. So with that, I just ask, please take this in consideration. And mainly the driveway situation is obviously something there. But one last, one last item here. I think if, when you read through the details of the brochure of, of basically what was provided through basically Scott, I just want to call out here that obviously Michael Ely was the developer who negotiated all these property deals. I talked to basically Guy at Paces Ferry Builders. He negotiated the deals with him. So we knew there was going to be a problem. So that's, it's, it's not a surprise here that there's a problem. So I just want to be clear that as the presentation is set right now, it appears that there was something other than there was, someone was being taken advantage of almost. When you look at the last paragraph, basically of the, of the information that was provided, that is not the case. And I want to be crystal clear there. With a seasoned developer that negotiated the deals, they knew exactly what was happening with the property. And I want to be clear with that because I feel like that was not correctly, uh, exposed the way it should have been. But thank you for your time. Is there any questions I could answer concerning this situation from basically a landowner standpoint?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, no, thank you very much. Jackie, do we have any other public comment? None, okay. Seeing none, then I will close public comment and open for a board discussion.
My thoughts never be used for any.
Correct.
So we can't control what they do with this.
Correct.
They're not planning on building a home right now.
It's already there.
Well, these, no, this is the
Oh, oh, sorry, I was looking at the wrong way.
Yep, sorry. So I mean, basically, we're here, we're here to say that if we're okay or not with this being.
Well, no, we're here to recommend if, if, if there's anything that needs to be, that we feel is necessary to make a recommendation to the BZA to help them make that decision on whether or not they're okay with the 13.4. So really to me on that is, when I look at it from a design standpoint, it's the two accessory buildings that are there, really just those two particular variances that pertain essentially to us as far as the, the existing structure being over and their looks. And it sounds like there's not the issue with the structures, but more of just the, the landlot itself, the access and how that was going. Whether or not, you know, it was the developer, the property owner, whoever, um, advantage of whoever or whatever deals were made, that's really not our privy and, and not up to us and really out of our, our scope, so. I would say I would, for me, I would, for, um, the 60-foot minimum yard structure, or so, A and B, um, or A, B and C, is it three of them or? Yeah, and so basically those three, I would recommend, for me, I would recommend approval because those pertain to the existing buildings are there, which doesn't seem like we have too much opposition to the actual existing buildings, more so just the lots. And then the other two, I think that we could recommend, uh, you know, abstaining from that and lend the BCA. As I feel like this is more of a long process that was overlooked and handled by both property owners, developers, city, Fulton County. It's a lot going on there, which is more than, than I believe is our privy is the design. So that's just my thoughts. Other discussion? Am I way off course here, Michael? Or David, excuse me, sorry.
I did have a question for Michael. Can you just mention the whole 10%? That when it doesn't have to come to us, that the city just, uh, approves it? If it's, this isn't, wouldn't that, wouldn't some of this fall into that? I, I forget what you called it.
A minor variance is 10%.
Minor variance. Okay.
Primary deference.
Okay.
That's why we have six here.
Yeah.
Dave, what you're saying is typically that 10% is a minor and it's at staff approval?
Yeah, yeah, staff approval, that's what I was, that's what I was hoping you were going to tell me.
Correct, yeah, you send out letters, the opposition 50 days.
Right. Yeah, I mean, how do, how do we recommend something that's not?
That's what I'm saying, so I feel like for those, we would just
Can we abstain from part of it?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Just tell them they're on their own.
What's that?
Just tell them they're on their own.
Again, I think that has, as far as the design, if we were to look at the design of the lot, it's always been there. That with that stem has always been there. It's really just, uh, semantics as far as the percentage, right? So, yes.
But the design of the lot should have been done, it should never come up to us because it should have always been conforming. Like it shouldn't have been
But it was, it was prior to the city adopting and three years ago, adopting the new
Oh, I see.
Technically, it's grandfathered in, however, because this deal was made with the back portion of it, it now, if this deal had not been made with the back, like lower portion of this property, none of this would be here. Right? But what's done is done and recorded and in Fulton County. So it's the same as it ever was, except for now, there's just the new semantics attached to it. That, as far as the design, it's always been like that. So I have no, but as far as recommending approval or denial, we could recommend that, hey, it's always been that way. We're okay with it. Or we could just abstain, am I correct? And just comment on the accessory structures, which is Yeah, which is more in our privy.
And I don't even know if there's a comment on the design of the accessory structures only because they won't exist.
That's correct.
That there's nothing I would place on them now to keep them looking any different than they currently do.
Well, we could say if we don't have any problem with it, we recommend approval for those three variances.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't even know if that's necessarily because
Because if they build on it, they have to tear them down, right?
Yeah.
Yes, theoretically, yeah.
Right. There's no use in, this shouldn't be white and this shouldn't be.
Yeah, because it's just going, it's always been that way for most people.
This is just a unique circle. I have a feeling that no matter what we do tonight, no matter what BZA does, the longstanding thing that's technically going to be out of civilian hands. So, okay. What else? See pondering down there? Any thoughts?
I let somebody else make a motion.
More for the round in the city.
Not in terms of principal use, not when it's part of the plan.
Okay, so I'm glad you brought that up then. If, and Scott had mentioned something too about what the code says as far as a residence, meaning with a structure there. So if there was no structure there, would this be an issue? Still would be a non-conforming lot, even though there's no structure, if, if there was no building there. Still would be a non-conforming lot, even though there's no structure. If, if there was no building there.
Of code inter, how city standards or the code, I, part of that was the flag lot accident.
Okay, so then you're vastly, you've got vast knowledge on this thing, okay?
Got a lot of pushback from neighbors that it's properties on them. Probably what happened. Council. But how do we? All. Fifteen. Houses.
So if it was an existing single-family home, the flag lot only needed to be one acre?
One needs to be the end.
Totally took its first spin here. So if there was a house here, a permanent residence, none of this would apply?
Point seven.
Yes, opposite to seven, that's right. Interesting, okay.
And this, this only was impacted by the change in twenty twenty.
That's correct.
Because before you could chop it up today, one-acre parcels with any stem you wanted.
Right.
Once we had thirty-five feet of front.
And if there was a one, one-bedroom, one-bath house on there right now, that wasn't over the setbacks, none of this would, would apply.
But both buildings are setbacks.
That's correct.
I gotta ask one question, sorry. I don't, I don't, but-
No, no, no.
So in the neighborhood next door, did they submit a final plot? I mean, a minor, a preliminary plot? The subdivision that's, the subdivision?
Yeah.
Correct, there's a final plan revision in.
No, but when they, when they did it, did they, they went through a preliminary plat process, right?
A final plot, I believe, original. Final plot revision to that dogleg. At. Just the dogleg, at the rest of it.
The dogleg was there, but it was included in, in the subdivision or not?
Whereas eight, roofed.
But before, prior, it wasn't. It was-
That's correct. At the flag represented at the top, at city staff, the top factor, represented over the only dogleg. Represented flat.
But can we go back to the semantics of calling it a single-family dwelling versus a structure? What, what does the code say again? It's a structure?
Does say structure.
So who decided that that means a single-family dwelling?
That's interpretation.
Okay.
I can, I can, I'll say that was the intent.
So if the property owner decided, I want to build a house on that, I'm not going to sell it. Could they? And they, if they built the house on it, the dwell, the other structures would have to go away and then everything would be fine.
It would be all in compliance, just?
Within the setbacks, yeah.
Right?
From a design aspect.
Yeah. Yes, I, I have, I have no problem with it. It is a very messy, convoluted kind of thing and it's this what-ifs, there's a lot of what-ifs and all this stuff and, design-wise, it's been like that before Milton, came up with the, the flag stem stuff and, and there's obviously, you know, not much opposition to, or if any, to the, the existing structures there. In fact, they'd probably rather those remain there, so I don't have any problem with, with those being over the- So. Any other discussion? So I'll make a motion then. I will make a motion to approve seven, courtesy review seven A, which is A V twenty-five dash twelve, one, four, five, zero, seven, Colburn Road. And the variance is attached to, to that request.
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
All right, so it is a five to two recommendation for approval to the BZA. Okay. All right, moving on. We'll move on now to our final reviews, eight A. One, three, seven, nine, four, Highway nine, Fifth Third Bank. Building review, mural design.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. Our first item for, under the final review is a mural design changes. So the applicant, Mr. David Michael, representing Fifth Third Bank, is requesting to review the revised mural design. This bank is located one, three, seven, nine, four, Highway nine. So just a background, on March fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the DRV approved the mural design with a condition. And a month later, they've submitted a modification to that design that was the board previously approved. So this is the reason why it's coming back to us to look at it one more time and to make sure and, and assist the applicant in selecting the, the right design for the bank. So they've submitted two options. Here's the first option. Material is, again, similar to what was previously approved, is a graphic film for textured surfaces with texture laminate. The colors, there's three colors provided here. You have more of a smoky black or the PMS four thirty-two, a lighter shade of gray or PMS four two zero, and then white. So this design, if you look at it, it has a smaller footprint. Probably maybe twenty percent approximately of that surface were used for this mural. Okay. Here's design option two, has a little bigger footprint compared to design one, similar material types and colors. And just to refresh our memory, they're using this mural design more for a wayfinding sign for patrons to look, to help them locate the entrance door of the building. So we look at it and, you know, both, both designs, option, design options are acceptable. And also the colors meet the Deerfield Form Based Code permitted colors. In fact, the, the choice of colors complement the existing color scheme found in the building. So the images that you see here, the one below with the green color, this is the layout that was approved in March. And then, of course, to the right are the two proposed, proposed new designs, option one and option two. Here's the side-by-side image of both options and the applicant is asking the board's feedback and, you know, decision whether to approve this design and color and help him select which option is suitable for that building.
So we can't say both are great?
You can say that, but we have to select one.
You don't want to go back to the green?
I kind of miss the green. Not gonna lie.
Please, continue.
Okay, that concludes my presentation for this one.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much, Jackie. Any questions for Jackie?
So pretty much just they picked new colors.
Yes.
Went away from the green.
Yep.
And then did combine the welcome and the enter here.
Right.
But it looks like they also changed the graphic.
Let me, yeah.
Just a little bit.
For the green, from the green to the other.
Yeah, the designs a little.
Yep. So it looks like the enter here previously was placed here. And then for both options, it looks like they combined welcome and then enter here.
Any other questions for Jackie? No? Okay, thank you. All right, the applicant come forward. Welcome back to Georgia.
Hello again. My name's David Michael. I'm from Site Enhancement Services, six, zero, zero, one, NIMPs Parkway, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, yeah, same thing. Jackie did great there. I don't want to step on her presentation. I just want to say we got two new options for you. We took your comments, thought about it some more and wanted to pivot, I guess. So these two options here, we're both good with and I know, I hope you got the color swatches as well, so that should give you an accurate representation of the colors. And if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Michael? No? All right, great, thank you. Jackie, I did have just a quick question for staff. So it was enough of a change, even though we recommended it, it was enough of a change to where they had to come back and do this again?
It's a, a change of color and unfortunately, that's a part of the change that including the exterior, so.
So, okay.
So it was originally, we approved for a green, but for formality, and they're bringing in a new set of colors. And that's actually, we need to bring it in front of you. Yep.
Got it, okay. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, then I will open up for, any other questions for the staff? I'll open up for public comment. Okay, then I will close public comment. Board discussion, option two.
Option two. Were the paint samples? I didn't get any samples.
Uh, well-
It's little.
Oh. That's not a sample.
They, they represent the actual colors on the building.
Okay.
Okay. Option two?
Option two.
Two, option two.
Option two.
I, I think they're both great.
Yeah, okay.
I prefer the graphic with the green one, but-
Right.
Yeah.
I could, that's what I asked, I could.
Come back next one.
Okay. Any more discussion? No? Okay. All right, so seeing no more discussion, I will make a motion to approve option two for eight A, one, three, seven, nine, four, Highway nine, Fifth Third Bank.
A second?
And so we have a motion for approval for option two and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you for taking the time and coming all the way back. Hopefully can put that mural up now, right? Okay, moving on, final reviews, eight B, eight hundred Mayfield Road, Milton's Cuisines and Cocktails. Yay.
All right, so this one is a fence design review. The applicant, Mr. Edward Whittle, representing Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails, is requesting a review of the installed fence along Birmingham Highway. This restaurant is located at eight hundred Mayfield Road. So on September tenth, two thousand twenty-four, the design review board approved the landscape plan for the restaurant. The plan included the addition of a three-split rail fence along Birmingham Highway. So the imagery below, this is, the, the left side is the landscape plan that shows a location of the fencing, where my cursor is, and then this is the proposed type of fence to be installed. However, a three-board equestrian fence has been installed without a fence permit. The applicant were, is committed to work, working with staff to resolve the issue and bring the project into compliance, either through a design modification approval or corrective measures. So staff look at this and review it. Clearly, the installed fence does not match the design that the board approved. And therefore, we recommend that DRB evaluate this fence to determine whether it may remain as constructed or must be modified to match the design that was approved on September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. So the image, just to give you an idea, the difference between a three-split rail fence and then what's already installed out there. That ends my presentation.
Jackie, is the fence that has been installed, the, the three-board equestrian fence, an approved fence in the city of Milton?
That's correct. Yep.
And it came back to us because?
Because they installed it and it's different from what the board approved.
But we gave them a variance, right, to a, or is, is the split rail fence also?
No, this is, this was also an approved.
Oh, it is approved, okay.
The split rail fence, yeah. There was no variance.
Okay. But they wanted a-
I mean, it's pretty similar, you know, that it's just like a-
Yeah, I guess my question is, Jackie, is at what point is this something that could be administrative decision? I mean, maybe that's not the right, maybe that's a loaded question, but-
Yeah, because we presented it and it was included in the DRB.
Okay, so any kind of change?
Any kind of change.
Regardless of whether it's an approved fence or not?
That's correct, yeah.
Got it, okay.
So in the area, though, I don't see any other split rail fences. Because I, I work right across the street, so I mean, I'm there all the time.
It's already on the property, there's-
Yeah, but she's just saying, they have to come back because it varied, it varied from what they originally-
So the, the reason why they first selected the three-split rail fence, because there was already an existing fence in that restaurant. And so they're just trying to match it. However, you know, there's probably a miscommunication between the contractor and maybe the owner and the, the fence that was installed was a three-board equestrian fence.
So now there's two different types of fencing on the property?
Yes. So, and then that's probably one of the recommendations the board will recommend. It may be later, if you're changing the existing three-split rail fence in, on the property, maybe match the three-board equestrian fence.
Is, is that in the landscape plan for the, because I know they're making outdoors-
Yes.
Stining. Is it to change the split rail fence that's already there? Is that in the plan?
No.
Or is it just kind of, okay.
But is the current split rail fence theirs or hometown carpets?
So, yes, so that's the fence that separate the town carpet and then the restaurant.
But it's on Milton's property?
Yes.
Okay.
So where my cursor is, this, there's an original three-split rail fence installed here a long time ago. So that's why when they came to us last year, you know, they want to match this fence. However, the one that's installed right now is a different type of fence.
Do we have any photos of the split rail fence that's there right now?
Um, unfortunately, I don't have, but it's pretty similar to this.
It looks like that.
Yeah.
It looks like that, but it's great.
Is it gray out?
It's a little bit like, probably because of weathering and all, it's like very poor condition, gray out, yep. So eventually, at one point, they're going to change that.
The split rail?
Yeah.
And they would go to the horse rail?
Yes, yep. Over there.
Yes, that's what staffs.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Jackie? No, seeing none, okay. Thank you. So would the applicant like to come forward and you have anything to add to that or?
On the patio, I made a mistake, put the wrong fence. But the three, the, the other fence that doesn't match it is along the parking lot where you really can't even see it. So it's, it's one of those, they don't join. There's shrubs in between and then there's the parking lot. So where this fence runs is not attached to the existing split rail fence. The split rail fence has only two, not three split rails.
The existing?
The existing.
Okay.
And like I said, I made a mistake. I put in what I thought looked better. It matched all around, you know, all the other fences in the area, so. I think it looks good, but it doesn't matter what I think.
How, how many, how much linear- How many, how much linear foot of the existing fence is still there?
Uh, 25?
Okay.
And this is 110.
Okay.
So it doesn't, the split rail doesn't run across, you know, or down Birmingham Highway.
Right.
You know, it's along the parking lot.
At Mayfield? Where is, I can't.
In between hometown carpet and Milton's. So on the, right before the intersection.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's shrubs in front of where you can.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? No? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Seeing no more questions for the applicant, I will open up for public comment? None? I'll close public comment. Board discussion?
Open with the equestrian fence, where I would like to see this eventually replaced the one that's.
And I feel like it's representative of what we see everywhere, but most of the time it's painted. And I'm struggling with that type of wood just graying out over time.
That's a great question for the applicant. Is the intent to paint that at some time? Okay. Okay.
Isn't it, what if we recommend they paint it and they paint the one that's already there to match it? So it's more cohesive with the same color.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
What is it?
Now, the other one existing is the two board, or yeah, two split rail. So it's not even, even if it wasn't three split, it would look different.
And it's different material. I think the paint would take differently. It's been there forever. I'm like, I just don't know. You'd have to sand it. I don't know.
Maybe we could recommend when it falls, is those, those split rail fences fall very easily? Once it falls, they have to put up a three-board equestrian fence.
To match.
Well, so that's a great question is this. If something happens to the existing fences there and we're approving, and we just say, hey, it is what it is, leave it as is. But then something happens and they come back, then they won't be doing the split rail. They'll have to do the, or excuse me, they won't do the split rail, they'll do the three-board equestrian.
That's correct. So if they're, yeah.
So at some point.
They have to match. At some point, they have to match a fence that's in there now that they've installed. Yep.
And they wouldn't have to come before?
No, no.
Airbeat. So we'd need to make that.
Personally, I like the three-board equestrian better anyways. The only reason I approve the split rail is because I thought they were trying to match.
Existing. Yeah. And that makes sense.
But I, I do agree that the new fence style-wise looks better.
I do, if it's painted. I just, I'm struggling if it stays like that. It just look, you keep like, you drive by and be like, when are they going to paint them?
Is there a, or for the new District of Mayfield, is there a fence recommendation or?
Um, I don't think so. Yeah.
So the, the color of the fence?
As far as because District of Mayfield, it's still within the Form Base Code, the Crab Apple Form Base Code. So there's not really a specific instruction or standards as far as fencing.
For Crab Apple?
The Form Base Code for the Crab Apple.
What, what color are the fences in Crab Apple?
Um, I mean, it varies, right?
It does vary?
Like if you're here in the residential, you see aluminum fans or fake fences, some with painted black.
If you see an equestrian fence in Milton, I think.
It's all black, right?
90% of the time, it's black.
Yeah.
Isn't, but what about color of it?
They, um, natural brown, black is also, brown is also acceptable.
But painted brown.
Yep. Cause it won't stay brown if it's not painted.
So, hold on a second, Michael. The fence that is installed currently now, it has to be that fence?
It's acceptable. Yeah. But so is a split.
But Michael just said it has to be that on a major thoroughfare. Would Birmingham Highway not be a major thoroughfare?
No.
Not too split.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to.
Yeah, but the, to Michael's point, the four-board or three-board equestrian fence, every time you, you know, in like Hopewell, Birmingham, that is the standard fencing.
And it's almost always painted dark.
But there are some Crab Apple Form Base Codes for fencing.
Does it face the major thoroughfare though?
Have eliminated any.
Yeah.
If what Michael says is true and the code does specify that it has to be a three or four-board equestrian fence, then there's no need for this change. Cause it's required.
Yeah, cause I just installed fencing in Crab Apple. Had to be certain height.
Say again? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We can recommend the color.
And it, what is that color?
I think we ought to call it Milton black and.
But there is, there's, it's like Kentucky.
It's not.
Yeah, it's tar paint. It's fence paint.
But.
Yeah.
It's the cheapest stuff to put on a fence.
Are you talking about creosin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do it either.
A Kirsten Ajin?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Sell it at Tractor Supply.
Crab Apple Form Base Code screening defenses. All, show me subject of fault. Are permitted in first layer of fences, also painted shell. In all locations, fences involve shotting by feet. Will be maximum 50%. Or initial not applied fences will. Offense materials shall be free.
In lot of fences?
Both of those rails, or the fences technically could meet that definition of that.
Except for the existing two-board or two-rail.
But it's outside of that. This Mayfield, a major thoroughfare.
Facing it, right?
And it's more than 60 feet from the road, correct? So then that wouldn't be.
And it's probably 30 years old.
Correct.
And behind bushes.
And it's behind the bushes, behind the building. Nobody can see it. Yep.
But the new fences.
I don't like the split rail fences because they fall over. I mean, if you, if you knock one of those posts four inches, one side's gonna fall down.
Yeah.
So.
But you like what's been installed?
Yes.
Yeah.
It should be a requirement in Milton. We should not allow the three-split rail fence.
Okay.
So I'll just start. I'm okay with it as it's installed and the existing two-board or two-split rail fence, because you can't even see it.
So can we make a recommendation that the two-board split rail fence be replaced with the equestrian fence if it falls down?
That is what the city staff is recommending, but doing it without the possibility of it falling down. But I guess we could recommend.
Yes.
Approval as is. But if there's ever any alteration or it falls down or anything like that, it must match these, or the install.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. And then can we request that it be painted?
Do we need to recommend a color if we?
Massaging Milton.
Yeah, I, I would probably, I probably would.
Cause what if their whole outdoor look is this, like, natural wood and they were hoping on.
Well, it was. If you go back, if you can remember back from here, looked up, it had all that rustic charm, which it currently has on there now, right? Not painted black. Painting it will extend the life of that, but.
But they could clear.
For me, I don't think, I don't think we should.
Well, you don't think you, we should recommend what?
I just, I, I think that's, I think it's fine how it is. I would like to see it painted, but I don't. I don't have a problem with it as.
I don't, I just think that type of wood is meant to be painted. I don't think it's meant to be grayed out.
All together has to mean unfinished.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Well, I said, we make a motion and then go from there. So.
So are we making a motion to add some things or just approving it as is?
Or would be a motion to approve with conditions? Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll give it.
Want to go?
I'll give it a go.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 8B 800 Mayfield Road, Milton's Cuisine and Cocktails. With some recommendations or?
Uh, approval with conditions.
Okay, approval with conditions. One being the fence be painted to match existing equestrian fences in the area? Is that good?
And specify the color, which is black, right? Yeah.
Okay. To match existing black equestrian fences in the area.
Right.
And also with the condition that when the existing split rail fence on property needs to be replaced, that they go with the same exact equestrian style fence painted black.
Good.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same, all opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, four to three. Great. Thank you. All right, moving on. 8C Market District at Crab Apple, Reliant Office Building, Site and Landscape Review. So we're going to do a joint on these two. C and D, so the building and then also the site and landscape review.
Yes. So this is going to be a two-part presentation. We'll start with the landscape and site plan review. And then the board can make a, discuss and then make a motion and approval. And then we jump in on the second part, which is the building. All right. So the applicant is Mr. Steve Rowe, representing Market District at Crab Apple and Reliant Office Building. He is requesting for final review of the building design, site and landscape plans for Reliant Office Building, which will be located at Market District at Crab Apple Development. The official address is to be determined. The size of this subject site is .89 acres. It is Zone T4 open within the Crab Apple Form Base Code. Existing use is commercial. I'm just going to show you an aerial view of the proposed subject site, which is indicated by a star here. It's in perspective. This is Heritage Walk. This is the entire Market District at Crab Apple. You will see also to the east side of that is Lakeside Crab Apple subdivision, which is a residential neighborhood. And then just north of that, you have schools. And further south, you'll see the Milton Branch Library and some other commercial businesses. So just the background and refresh our memory, Reliant Office Building was presented to Design Review Board multiple times for building, site and landscape review. And ultimately, DRB approved on November 8, 2023. The, this, the building, site and landscape for the construction of an 18,990 square foot, three-story building located at, I'm sorry, that's an error, but that's 860 Mayfield Road. So this is the original location when it was approved back in 2023. And this is an example of the elevation that was approved. So fast forward, Community Development received updated plans for the new location, which is now the Market District at Crab Apple on March 16, 2025. So again, this is just to show you, bordered in red is the entire Market District at Crab Apple. And the proposed site for the Reliant Building is indicated by a star. And it's worth also mentioning that back in 2019 or possibly 2020, there was a land disturbance permit and plan that was approved for the entire development. So this is what that LDP looks like. And now the proposed Reliant Building is going to go in this building aid, which will not be built. And this is going to be replaced by the Reliant Building. So now let's move on to the site and landscape plan review. I just want to point out some existing conditions that I observed when I visited the site. Surface is pretty level. There's existing sidewalk along Heritage Walk, as well as some pedestrian lighting along Heritage Walk. Obviously, there's residential homes east of that proposed site, commercial buildings west of the proposed site, trees, some trees north of the subject site. And then there's also an existing ramp and entrance to this site. I'll be sharing some, a few pictures here. This is the view to the south. You'll see here, just, uh, right there is the Milton Library. And I don't know if you can see that, but that's the roundabout. And this is Heritage Walk. View to the west, this is looking at the existing commercial businesses on the development. View to the north. Trees that provide screening between the proper, the subject site and the school behind it. And this is the view to the east. As you can see, residential homes, which is a part of the Lakeside Crab Apple subdivision. And some additional photos, I just want to show you that there's already an existing sidewalk and also some lighting that you'll see the Granville post or, I'm sorry, Washington Post and Granville fixture, which is the standard lighting that you see along Heritage Walk. And let's look at the proposed site layout plan. So you'll see here, this is a parking area. There's 75 parking spaces total. There's an open space. And in the 2019 approved LDP, this was already in place. So they're keeping that. As well as they're keeping the pathwalk that connects to the Lakeside Crab Apple Community Park. And then there is a proposed four-foot wall that will separate, you know, the, the subject site and as well as the residential. The residence to the east. And the proposed office building. Let's look at the landscape plan. So there are several trees that will be planted. This is just a half of the entire site plan. But I just want to show you that especially for this side, that there are significant screening that will be provided between the neighborhood and the office building. A bunch of ornamental plants as well and ground cover will be provided. Right? So now let's look at some standards here. You have, I've provided a staff report to you that has, that we've outlined all the standards applicable to this development. But I want just to point out several of them that I think it's worth mentioning. So to the top corner, you have the applicable standards from civic zones, the off-street parking loading, parking location standards, landscape standards and parking lot layout. We look at this code and we make sure that what, what's being proposed meets those standards. So let's start with proposed development will retain the civic space that was included in the approved LDP. Civic space is open to the public. As mentioned earlier, 75 parking spaces provided, including three ADA spaces that's located. that's located to the east of the building. A landscape island was provided next to every six parking spaces in a row. However, some parking areas have eight to 10 parking spaces in a row. Open parking areas are screened from prob- public frontage. You will see, uh, if we look at, this is Heritage Walk. Um, there's a parking area here that's exposed, uh, one exposed to the subdivision and also exposed to Heritage Walk. So what they're proposing is they're gonna put a significant screening more in vegetation. And you're probably gonna ask later on, how about the parking lot that's, uh, behind here? It's going to be exposed, but there is also a future building to be, uh, constructed here in the near future.
Jackie, have they initiated any kind of permitting or anything like that for that future building?
Um, not yet, not that I know of, yep.
Is the entrance to the building near, near the red area?
It's right here, so this is Heritage Walk.
On the arc.
Yep.
The building.
Yeah, so, but what about the building?
Oh, the entrance to the building, so there are several entrances to the building, but this is actually the entrance that will serve entrance for staff, employees. And then you have one up here, and we'll, I'll show that to you when we get to the building plan, uh, review. But that's where the location of those, um, entrances.
So there's gonna be a wall where the red is and vegetation.
Yes, so there will be trees and ornamental plants and, um, a four-foot tall, uh, brick wall that will match the, um, the material used for the primary building.
Is that wall retaining purposes or just for barrier?
We're gonna consider it, it's not retaining anything, but we're gonna have, uh, one of my condition is to apply for retaining wall, um, application, because we're gonna look at it as a retaining, but technically it's not, I think, because that's the only application type that we have. And we are requesting that it will be an engineered stamped drawing, so, so that's one of the conditions that.
Even though it's not four feet tall?
Um, well, in our retaining, you know, four feet or up, it has to get a retaining.
But if it was 3.99, they wouldn't have to.
Um, I think the particular for this one, oh yes, I know, uh, but this one, because this is very important to have that screening to separate, you know, to protect the neighbor especially. Um, we would require that we will look at it and review it, yeah.
There's a pretty good drop-off, though, between the backside of those townhomes.
Um, let me see if I can go back to the.
A little bit of topography, like some content.
There is, like, if you can see from here.
Mm-hmm.
About two.
Just a little bit.
Uh, maybe not as much, okay.
Agreed in that way.
Alright, um. And as mentioned ear- earlier, parking spaces adjacent to the residential neighborhood will be screened by a four-feet wall, trees and ornamental plants will be planted along the wall. There is also a proposed ligustrum, it's a type of tree, but it is listed as an invasive species. So I just wanna point that out. Uh, there's no proposed parking lights, um, on this site plan that was, uh, submitted. And also there's, uh, the exterior light fixture does not have a 45-degree light cutoff. And I'll, I'll explain that, um, later. So based on what we've received, the plan, it does adequately satisfy the related standards. Um, but we do wanted the applicant to provide substantial screening on the east property line, and that they're willing to provide that. Uh, that will separate the, the new development and the residential neighborhood, and mainly to protect the neighbors, because you know, as you park, all that light beams and, you know, it goes to that direction where, um, the resident, uh, direction, and it's kinda important to conceal that and screen that, to protect them from light noise and potentially also maybe, um, other types of noises, uh, um, that screening will help. So therefore, staff recommends approval with the following conditions: to ensure that the exterior wall sconces must have a 45-degree light cutoff to reduce glare and minimize light pollution. Uh, submit, submit, uh, LDP permit application. Submit a retaining wall permit application for the proposed four-feet-tall brick wall. An engineer staff drawings is required. Ligustrum, as mentioned earlier, is listed in the code as a prohibited invasive species, so replace that with a four-to-six-foot holly at maturity or similar species. Replace the proposed Chinese pistache tree with native trees. Revise the parking plan to show six parking spaces in a row next to a landscape island. And lastly, it's also important that any deviation from the plan will require going back to DRB for review and approval. So that's all I have for the site and landscape. Um, I will entertain any questions.
Does the, the overly district code require six day, six parking spaces?
Yes, this is, uh, applicable to all.
So not eight to 10, but six that's applicable, so right over, what we have there now?
Yes.
Is every six?
Yep, for every six, you have, have an island.
But then you said there, they have more parking spaces than required.
Yes, so.
But will that be shared parking with the future building?
So in the future, it will become a shared parking.
So we don't really know, depending on the use of that building, whether that'll be sufficient or not.
Yeah, so we look at it like, have, you know, do they meet the code as far as parking spaces? Have they provided enough parking for the size of building that they have? And the answer to that is yes. So 64 is the, um, minimum parking requirement, and they've provided 75. So when they do the future building later, they can apply for maybe a 10% uh, parking reduction, and pretty much they're gonna, um, share that parking space.
Do, I have a few more questions. Does everyone else? Is it okay if I go? Okay. Um, what, in that open or civic space, what are those black lines? What does that indicate?
Uh, storm retention.
Yes.
Oh, that's storm retention.
Yep.
Yikes.
But is that underground?
Yes.
They're not visible?
Nope.
Okay.
Yep.
Look like a grass field.
Yeah.
They're just on there so they know you can't build on top of it.
And. I don't think the mics are on very high. I can barely hear Michael, too. I'm sorry, what was the last question? Yes.
It's a storm retention.
Yeah, storm retention.
Stormwater, yeah.
But it's underground.
Underground.
Correct.
Can't see it, yep.
Um, my next question was, is there a timeline for the development to be complete or under construction?
Um, that is a question that we will, um, ask our applicant.
Okay.
Yep, not familiar with the project timeline for, for their, their plan. Right now, they just wanna, uh, seek approval from the Design Review Board.
Excuse me, we, we'll have, um, a public comment here in just a minute if, if you'd like to speak, okay? Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other question?
Jackie.
So, and I, I saw that you, um, said the ligustrum are invasive species, so you switched to holly?
No, so one of my recommendation is to, um, it's listed, however, they need to find a replacement, yes, I'm sorry, yep, a six-foot holly at maturity or similar.
And that's against the, the wall, the four-foot wall?
Um, if we look at it, let me just, if I can find, okay. So ligustrum is one of the ornamental. Yep, so part of it, I think it will be a variety, it will be a, a mix. So most likely, yeah, it looks like a ligustrum.
They were up against the wall?
Yep, uh, up against the wall, so if they could replace that with holly or any, um, species that's, uh, similar.
Yeah, I would just, it, my concern is it's a pretty tight space, and I know ligustrum can grow to 20 feet tall.
Okay.
It can be really compact. The holly, I'm just not sure can actually screen like the ligustrum could, so maybe could we look into another suggestion or have somebody else suggest something that would serve that purpose?
Yeah, we can look at it, and of course.
Was that suggested from Sandra?
Yes, Arborist, so if, um, you know, if, if we want to explore other types of, uh, screening vegetation for that, uh, we'll have the Arborist weigh in and decide.
We're just trying to screen the four-foot wall, right?
Yeah, as well as, you know, the parking. And we'll, we've added trees as well here, you can see, some natural, uh, oak.
Yeah, I would just, that's, that wall backs up to the subdivision, and so a four-foot wall isn't going to screen anything, and the vegetation's going to need to act as a screen, and I just wanna make sure that whatever's chosen, it does that.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel like it should be some sort of evergreen, because you don't want it to be bare in the winter and you see the wall.
Yeah, well, holly and ligustrum are evergreen, it's just, holly can be a tree form and it's not that tall.
Right.
But I just, you know, somebody needs to look at it, knows what to do there.
Jackie, I have a question.
Okay.
How different is this building from what was originally proposed to go in that space?
Um, for one thing, the size is different. Not so much as far as architecture, the elevation, they've used the same materials. There's just some modification as far as the location of the windows. There's one elevation that doesn't, you know, that have little windows. So compared to what was approved, and I have some imagery that I will, uh, show later, it's, uh, there's some significant changes. Okay.
So, excuse me, regarding site or landscape, do we have any questions for, any more questions for Jackie? I'm assuming you're just going to jump right into, or do we need to go through the process?
To discuss and then the process of making a motion. We wanted to make it separate, come back with it, yep.
Okay, so.
It'd be nice if Sandra was here.
I think that if we choose to allow, or if we choose to recommend approval, then we can say, we don't have to be specific on that, we can say at the discretion of the city Arborist.
Yes.
But she's already made that, that, that.
That was her recommendation.
Or that recommendation was the hollies instead of.
And it, it may be fine, I just was questioning it, because I know ligustrum, I know what it does.
And, and.
Hollies are full, too.
Yeah.
Right?
They're dense.
And they'll grow wide and they, they trim very well, so as long as they're maintained. Um, and they will grow, if, if we're starting out with six-to-eight-foot hollies, they'll grow, you know, up to 10, 12 feet, right? So even though we have a four-foot wall, reality is, is within five to 10 years, those six-to-eight-foot hollies are gonna be, you know, 10 to 12 foot tall and very thick and full.
It's also, there's different type of hollies, you have Stevens, you have Savannah.
Yep.
Holly, yeah, and, uh, but she did say that four to six feet at maturity, and if holly's not gonna work, then we can look at similar species.
I'm literally implanting those right now.
I just planted a bunch of ligustrum, not here, but.
And they have many branches, so it has opportunity for privacy, right?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that building is three stories, four?
Yeah, three stories.
And, I mean, a six-foot holly is not really, I know we're screening the wall, I'm just thinking about the residents there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, they have sky pencil holly on here, and those are pretty thin.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't get very tall either, I don't think.
How tall was the building that was originally gonna go there?
Forty-two feet. So it's a three-story building, it's 42 feet, same thing as what was previously approved by DRB.
Okay. Okay.
Um, it looks like they're showing a different pattern in front of their entries, is that pavers that they're planning?
Um.
I, I didn't see it on.
No, there's a legend in the bottom right corner.
Where do you see that?
Um.
Oh, on the actual floor. Still don't see that. Oh, well, no, I still, it's, just says Plaza.
It's on the last page.
Yeah, the plaza's part of the, it's concrete, it's part of.
Yeah.
Is it just concrete?
So.
Are you talking about this section?
Yeah, so the, basically the drivable area.
Yes, that area.
Heavy-duty concrete, or, uh, heavy-duty asphalt, and then parking, or parking asphalt.
Asphalt.
What is this area in front of the entries? The walkway area?
Yep.
Yeah, like grass.
No, no, not that, and right in front of the buildings, where that, you see the doors?
The hash lines, like just paper.
Is that pavers?
Hashed paper.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, there's.
There's nothing that's.
I don't see it anymore.
That's an interesting entrance.
I think maybe that's a question for the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay.
Any more question for staff?
I'm sure we'll have some more.
Oh, okay.
Um, but let's do this for the, for the sake of moving forward, and maybe the applicant will help answer any questions that we may have for, for you, so.
Okay.
Um, any more questions for Jackie at the moment? No? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, the applicant would please come forward at the time?
Good evening, Steve Rowe with AEC, 50 Warm Springs Circle, Roswell. Uh, let me get, see if I can load this real quick. I can answer a lot of your questions.
Great.
That you've got. And I've got the entire history, unfortunately, of this building moving from site to site.
I've been there with you.
I will not rehash what Jackie has done a great job of explaining. Um, I'm doing a stop on this page real quick and just point out that, oop, sorry, the existing building that we're, or the building that we're showing is actually moved about 50 feet further west away from those townhomes. That was originally anticipated, that an original building was five feet off the property line and went straight up for three and a half stories. So we've actually really tried to take that in consideration with the design, and we pulled it a little further off of the property line. Having a four-foot retaining, or a four-foot freestanding wall that's gonna have masonry on both sides. And then the, the reason for the ligustrum was it's a, it's a fast-growing screen, it can be easily maintained. It's exactly what we've actually used in the park across the street, uh, at the green. So that entire hedge is a, is a recurve ligustrum, which is what we were proposing. I'm not adverse to using another material that can get taller or get, get more fuller. Uh, some of the things that may have come to mind were maybe some arborvitae's, uh, some different sky pencil hollies, some different things. So we, we can work with Sandra on that. I don't have a problem, that's, that's not a hill I'm gonna die on with that plant material. Um, one thing I wanted to point out is the, the underground detention area that we had shown there is no longer necessary. We've actually dug into the hydrology study for this area, and there is sufficient room in the existing pond, so we're gonna be able to just flow right through and not have that underground detention in that park area anymore. Uh, jumping.
That's a heck of a call savings to find out.
What's that?
So that's a heck of a call savings to find out, right?
Well, it was, it was a little contentious, because we'd already paid the money to use the existing pond, and when we got the hydrology study, we had to really dig into it, because initially it didn't look like it fit.
Ah, God.
Uh, but working with the staff, we figured out it, it was, it was, there was capacity. Um, the first question I heard about the, the areas out front, the idea of those is to have some scored and possibly colored concrete at the, at the accent areas. The main reason for this front area to have it is, this is actually the front door to the building. So most visitors are gonna enter the building in this location. And then this is just additional plaza space, because there's actually a, a little conference room here that we thought would really be nice to spill out into an outdoor space that would be adjacent to the park. So we tried to play off of that with the landscape architecture, with the, with the more enhanced finishes and be able to have those people, you know, be, have an indoor-outdoor space that kinda flows. The other plant material we've got, it's just, this is just kind of a smattering of what we're proposing. These are the arborvitae's that, that we talked about. Uh, I've got those in other parts of the site, but could easily bring those in. Uh, black gums and some of the parking is Chi- Chinese pistache, uh, blood good Japanese maple for accent and, and not all oaks for good shade. Uh, some of our other ornamental shrubs, the, uh, the dwarf crepe myrtles, the dwarf gardenia, recurve ligustrum, which we've, we've talked about, the Suzanne fringe flower, which is that burgundy color shrub. Um, the idea is to kinda layer all of these, both with height, texture, and have them kinda spill out into the walk to help accent and ground the building into the landscape. And then some of the accent colors are your pink muli grass, the, the Stella d'Or, d'Lilies, and then just some, some perennials to add some different color. perennials to add some different color at this time, different times of year. One of the things I wanted to just kind of clarify on the parking is the reason we went with the, the eight to 10 in some of the spaces is that was actually what was originally approved. So we were trying to kind of maintain that, that theme going forward, but in the area that we were reworking with the, the specific areas around the building, we went back to the six spaces. But if that's something that we've got to do throughout the rest of the site, that's not going to hurt us, we can figure that out. And one of the questions that came up was on the future building. We'll solve that in when it comes, whether it's either parking under the building or reducing the size of the building, that's something we'll have to solve for. At this point, I can answer any questions you might have on the, on the site and landscape.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. What is the thought process behind facing the entrance to the east instead of street facing?
I think the architect was thinking of, of having it be more of a private space because that, that plaza space being off the main drive coming in, and it was away the function of the building, and I may let him answer that better than me, but this was, this was kind of the consensus as to the orientation and sighting of the building.
Because this is not necessarily retail like the rest of it is, and so to have like a, you know, prominent entrance right there, people just be walking up to it. Private commercial.
Well, and amenities are so big right now with office space, it's.
How many employees will be here?
I'm not sure. Yeah, 50 at most. And it's, and it's a contractor's office, so there'll be a lot of people in and out.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I don't know if Steve's the right one, but do we, do you know if there's a timeline on when the future building would be?
I, I know that my client is back and he's pushing me to get this approval so we can get going.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a much easier site, the, there were some site work challenges with the last site with costs and, and things. And this site is much more set up for a, a more efficient and more economical building.
I don't think we have any questions right now, but.
Okay. You may have more?
I will stay close.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, um, seeing no more comments for the applicant at this time, I'll open up public comment.
Barely.
Thank you.
Name is Sue Mayer. I've lived in Alpharetta for 10 years and Milton Lakeside Crab Apple for three. I found this to be a wonderful, quaint, charming, small town, uh, beautiful, small town to live in and to retire in and, um, I know I'm not the only one, I speak for others at Lakeside Crab Apple who are disappointed with the structure itself, the size. Um, not just for the fact that it's right next door to Lakeside Crab Apple, but it's part of Milton community. I, for the life of me, I just can't even understand why something like this would be approved, but, you know, I, I guess what I would hope is, I, I mean, I, I didn't even know it was going to be a three story structure. I think that's just unfathomable, uh, to have something, a structure that size, commercial. This, you know, is not a commercial area, we, we have more and more traffic flowing through, um, that area more and more each day, it seems, and, and rush hour is, of course, even more of a problem. You, you know, to, to discuss the, the separation, if this is what's happening and we're going through with something like this, to have the separation of Lakeside Crab Apple, which is really more indicative of the, representative of the community that we live in, uh, more than a commercial building. To have a separation, a division of some kind, a four foot wall, to me, won't cut it. It just doesn't, I've been in landscaping my whole life. The trees and shrubs that we're talking about are not going to serve much purpose. If, if it serves a purpose, maybe 15, 20 years from now, when most of us won't even be here. It just, doesn't seem fitting at all. But if you're going to try and make this work and fit it into the community, then what I see, what I envision is a, a large berm. A large berm with trees and shrubs on both sides of the berm. The arborvitae's should be the giants because they get much bigger than the emerald greens. The cryptomeria japonica's are like the Leland cypress, they're hard to tell them apart. But the cryptomereas are lovely, we have some, in fact, already planted in that location towards the back, towards the school. Um, the lighting concerns me as to how that would affect the, uh, Lakeside Crab Apple subdivision and the community as a whole. It, it, it's, it's just mind blowing that we moved here to come to such a quaint, charming, beautiful downtown Milton community here. And I have a three story structure that's going up right next to me. I'm the second unit in from, from where that building will exist. And at the very least, putting in a berm, a large berm with cryptomereas, giant arborvitae's, anything that creates privacy, a four foot wall is just not going to cut the mustard on this. It's just not, in my opinion, what this community wants to see is a, a red brick wall. Green space is another thing that I thought about, you know, creating a park-like atmosphere. And that berm should have some boulders in it and make it fit in with, just try and blend the two together somehow with boulders and, and woodlands and, um, green space, maybe a park, like a park, like a couple benches for people to sit. Something that's more inviting than a sterile building that's three feet tall. A three feet tall, but, but three stories tall. I'm, I'm very disappointed, I, I never thought something like this would happen. I knew that there would be storefronts and retail space. I know they've struggled, I'm aware of that. But maybe the, the, the combination of, of what those leases rent out for and getting the right combination of storefronts will eventually make it work. Why do we have to put in a commercial realis, uh, commercial structure is, is just beyond me. I think it's just showing Milton is not what I thought it was, it's showing despotness. And I'm just very disappointed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jackie, do we have any? We have none, okay. So seeing none, I will close public comment and, uh, open it up for, for discussion. Jackie, I have a question. The, the overall, um, LDP or the Crab Apple, um, form base when it was adopted or that, that site plan, uh, what is the max building height allowed? In that?
Uh, for zone T4, it's 42 feet high.
Okay, and how tall is this building?
Uh, 42.
42, okay. And then in that approved, um, that approved, am I LDP or?
Yeah, back in between.
What was the distance, how close could a building be to that, that property line? In other words, was there ever any buffers?
So for this original, I think, was it, I can't remember, was it 10 feet or? Okay. It was very tight, so this is the original building eight. And as what Steve Rowe mentioned earlier, the new proposed building is 50 feet right from that property line, yep.
Okay. So technically by right, a building that is 42 foot tall could be built five foot from the property line?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And this is for the approved LDP, uh, back in 2019, so there might be some conditions or something. But for that spot, they were proposing back then to build, um, also, I believe, either three story building and then the garage is under.
Right, yep.
Yeah, got it, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, what else? Looking at just the site and the landscape.
This is also not my most favorite.
Well, that will be for the building review.
Okay.
Just to keep them separate based on the, the layout, the landscape design, plants and stuff like that. And then can you bring back up the staff's recommendations again too, please, if you don't mind?
We're not looking at the building?
Just the site.
We're going to, yes.
So first we're doing the site.
That's correct, yeah. This will go through the motions again. I'll start off, I, I think, thank you, Jackie, for that. I like the fact that it's, I like the fact that the building is 50 foot away from the property line. I like the fact that they do have a, a pretty significant planting package that has elevation. I think that the not all oaks are very fast growing trees, very thick trees, but they do, they do tend to leave or lose their leaves, however, no matter what, with a 42, with a 42 foot tall building, you know, I, I think we can, there's trees that can mask that and help reduce the grandiose of the, a big brick facade. So I like that being 50 foot from the parking or 50 foot, it, or, you know, or more from the, the, from the property line, seeing as this, this could be by, approved by right up to five foot. So for me, I'm, I like the fact that it's moved off from the residential aspect of that. The height does not affect me as, or, or concern me as much. The townhomes are three story townhomes, I would imagine that they're 38 to 40 foot tall as well. So it's not going to be too towering, I don't believe, over townhomes. I think the idea of having like a commercial retail based place and then having townhomes and then having single family is the natural transition from a commercial space to a residential space. And so this, so be it just as right at that commercial space. I do, I do like her idea about some park benches. I think that'd be cool, right? It does not obviously solve the problem or, or the, the concern of, of, you know, the location, but if I was to make a recommendation, I would recommend at least like two benches out there, right? The kids come out from, from Milton High School, Northwestern and stuff. It just gives them a little bit more space to get out of the road, right? If, if you've ever been, I, I, you know, the Starbucks, that roundabout, I mean, it's mass chaos. Little green space, I think it's cool, I, I like the idea. I think that's great that they saved it. So this, this does give a place for, um, you know, me thinking of my children.
Yeah.
When they're running around, that they have like a space and, you know, bless their hearts for allowing them to be able to use that space because I don't know if I would, but.
They don't get used.
So, while I understand the concern, I think that some pretty decent efforts have been made and some pretty substantial plantings have been suggested to really help to kind of break that up. And so for me, I, I think landscape and site specific, I, I think that this is kind of a win for both the, the community and also for the, the, the landowners as well. So I think that's really, the park benches is kind of the only thing I would say that I would like to see added to that. But other than that, I'm, I'm good with staff and my recommendation.
Can I, can I throw a few things out there too, just for discussion? I, so the sidewalk, that, there was a different plan that showed the sidewalk through the, um, I think Steve, you may have put it on as a rendered site plan. But it, where does that connect to with the townhomes? Or maybe it doesn't, maybe it's, does it connect to Lakeside Crab Apple?
I was trying to find an aerial photo that showed it, the problem is the, the towns, the aerial photo predated the, the building of the towns, but there's a central walkway between the, where the units face.
Okay.
So that sidewalk would tie to that central green between the units.
Okay.
L521.
And so that connects there, okay. I mean, I, I'm just throwing these out there, instead of benches, wouldn't tables or some, even something more than benches? Because that's a great area for the kids to congregate or even just anyone walking their dog or just wanting to sit outside and enjoy.
Some type of like an arbor with a swing or something, just to have a gathering area. I think you could use it for the employees, that's a great opportunity to have some type of a breakout space where they can get fresh air, take a break.
We try to have a soft, if you notice, there's a real soft transition between the, the, the office space into that green. So we, we tried not to have a hard line, hard hedge, you know, that this is ours, this is theirs. We tried to be real soft with that transition.
Yeah. Something else, I don't know, sculpture is even used in this area, really? Is that something else? I mean, I'm just throwing out some, all the branch. I'm not saying, I'm just, just for discussion.
My only concern with like the, um, park benches and sort of pergola and stuff like that is like, no.
Yeah, that's true, the horse statue.
Okay, then we gotta add a trash can and then who's going to take care of it, who's going to clean the trash?
On their property.
That's correct, so I think.
Point.
But even from a planting standpoint, that whole plaza area without the detention area, something. Yeah, fair.
Yeah, I definitely think that we could do a lot more with it.
And we can work with staff on that, we, we just really, we're focused more on the building, knowing that that's a, a public green space and we haven't really had any discussions with staff on what that ultimate, other than please connect it to the townhomes. So that's, that's kind of what we did.
Out of curiosity, were there any other options discussed besides the wall?
Out of curiosity, were there any other options discussed besides the wall?
That was actually staff's recommendation. I thought it was a good one because it's, it's a hard thing that blocks the headlights. When you get past the wall, there's actually a four to five foot slope down to the, to the, to the townhome. So that, that's going to do a really good job from day one of blocking headlights. We didn't think of fully screening because we thought that, that having, you know, a visual end of the building with the trees framing it and just having little vignettes of the building itself, that you're not looking at the face of the building. It's going to be broken up with low landscape, higher trees, and then just the facade itself is going to have, have breaks within it. So we weren't trying to fully screen that. We were just trying to accent that and make it a soft transition between the two.
I like the landscape design at the front where how it, I mean, they've got it close to the building, so they do kind of have a park feel. If they pulled their landscaping out into that area, it would make it look more like it wasn't a park, like it wasn't a community space.
Right, like it's part of the front yard.
Yeah, so I like the design that you've got because it does feel almost like invited, like the community is welcome to come in that area.
Yeah, well, you look across the street, it's like a parking lot.
Right.
Yeah. And I can assure you that that is not something that.
I feel like the opposition was a little bit concerned, and I could have misinterpreted, but she's mentioned in a while, would it be if we ask for mature trees to be planted? Would that, you think?
But even then, like they've got, what's the inch, what's the caliber of those?
We have two-inch going in, but, and I can send you some studies. There's actually been studies done by Auburn University where they planted two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, five-inch and six-inch, and in five years, you couldn't tell the difference because two-inch trees don't really go into a shock like a six-inch tree does. And then, and within the five years, and they actually have a better longevity than the larger trees going in.
That was good.
I didn't believe it at first either, and I actually saw the photos. I was, I was pretty impressed.
No, there is some validity to that.
And I'm okay with the parking spaces having eight to 10, because it's going to be in the back of a building. If it was like that one parking lot that's right across the street, where it's on the road, they have an issue with it, but.
My only concern with that is that then it's going to differentiate and it's not going to match the rest of it. However, parking over there is a nightmare.
The existing facility itself right now has the larger spacing between islands. If you, if you went and drove and.
You know, that's the thing, is I looked in near it. So it has more than six? It does?
Yes. Yes.
Which is what they're proposing.
That's why we matched it, yes.
Is this parking going to be shared with the retail at all that's over there?
It will be. It's all, it's all going to be shared.
It's all going to be shared, yeah.
It's hard not to allow that.
Because right now, basically we're just a big gravel lot, right, where everyone kind of parks anyways, there's no parking. I don't, I think half the people I know even knew that there was a parking deck there. So.
That's why I think going to more spaces separating, you get, you pick up some more space. And you need space over there. Maybe at least, at least in the back.
Got it. Yeah.
I know it's tight and I know we need parking, but I know, you know, there's going to be a building in the front of the parking lot, but can we not put some type of plantings in the parking? I mean, it could be years. It's just one big level parking lot, right?
We've got planting in all the islands.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I totally missed that.
Sorry, shrubs and trees. Yeah, if I put the trees on every plan, you wouldn't read all the other stuff.
But over here? This area too?
Yeah, well, they have trees.
Yeah.
I'm just not seeing it.
There'll be trees in all of these. These are planters.
Yeah, which is essentially, oh, right here.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, L3.0 shows you the trees.
And four.
Yeah.
L4.
Yeah, that has the full landscape. And that's the canopy coverage as well. Yeah.
Okay, what else? And to your point, I, I think, yeah, even if we suggest a larger tree, to his point, is that at a certain point, that tree is going to be large enough anyway, and it's not going to mask 43 feet or 42 foot tall.
No.
Especially if it's on an uphill. From the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a two-to-one slope. It's more like a four, it's a gentle slope, but it is sitting up.
Yeah, so it's higher and then you got a four-foot fence, so it covers, like you said, the headlights. I do like that idea. I think that was a great.
It was a good idea from staff, I agree.
And then obviously, the trees are going to be up top, right? So let's just say you have 15 foot or so of somewhat, and you've seen these, these street trees, I mean, they.
I do have one more question. There's no sight lighting in the parking lots?
I believe we did have sight lighting in one of those. If not, but yes, we'll have to, we have to by code, like, like the parking lot.
But per her recommendation, it was, what did you say? It was slanted or?
Full cutoff. That was on the building sconce lights.
A building sconce.
But the parking lot lights typically have full cutoffs as well, for the same reason.
Which would really be no different than the retail that's there right now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm just thinking about, that's what they would need if they didn't have any. Okay.
What else?
I'm just going back to this area where there's this green space and there's a sidewalk, and I just feel like it would be nice to have something that sort of divides it and breaks it up a little bit, like the berm that she mentioned, or with the plantings, just to also keep, there's, you know, it's inviting, but you're still not letting people just, you know, throw frisbees on your property. I mean, that's, I feel like that's kind of risky, but.
Well, I think that's the intent though. That's what we worked out with city staff, is having it as a lawn area open for the public to use.
Okay, I'm just thinking of liability, but okay.
Well, I, one concern, and this may not be a concern, but Heritage Walk is getting busier. Is that going to cause, I mean, I know City of Alpharetta, they had to put a wall there where the green space was to help as a barrier from the vehicles.
If you look at how this is functioning, there's really just a small corner that touches Heritage Walk. It actually, the roadway curves away and the green space goes back towards the townhomes themselves. So it is actually fairly well-protected.
Okay. So the walls are more for, about speed limits, like, and that, that speed limit on that road is so low.
For Alpharetta?
Yes.
I think it was also for a barrier from the green space.
I heard it was speed limit. Like if it's under a speed limit, they didn't need the wall, because if it's over a speed limit and you go off the road, you cause more, like it's.
Oh, you're saying because of the speed limit of the street, they needed it? But I think just even for safety-wise, they put it there regardless, but either way, it doesn't matter.
Well, so they still have the street, the existing street trees that are there, right? And then they have five-foot grass strip, and then they have a eight-foot sidewalk, right?
Yeah, so that'll help.
You know, so again, like in this location, they, it's a 10-foot building setback, so they literally could bring that building 10 foot from that right away. You know? So it's tucking it back. That's, that's one thing that I do appreciate, this design and the fact that it is taking into consideration the adjacent residential and then also pushing it back.
Yeah. That open space, was that required per the ordinance? Civic space?
Every four acres lot size, you're required to have a 5% open space. So when they did the LDP in 2019, the total acreage is 4. something acres, so technically they're supposed to provide 5% open space.
And is that the 5%?
And that's the location of that open space, yeah. It's not just goodwill.
I, I like it there versus parking lot.
I agree.
Oh, yeah.
So. Okay. Any other discussion?
Now put up again the recommendations.
Yeah, please, if you don't mind.
So are we going to make a motion for the landscape review first and then get into the?
Site and landscape, and then, and then we'll basically go back through this again, but with the buildings. Okay, so do we think we're ready to make a motion anymore?
Can I ask about the invasive species? Is that something that y'all are against and you're not going to allow it to be planted, so we have to make?
Yes, it's in the code. We've listed all invasive species. So if it's in there, we got to make sure that we find a replacement for that.
And I'm assuming the Chinese pistache tree is not a native tree, which is why it's not recommended?
The, which one? Oh, the pistache. No, the arborists look at it, it, it's not listed invasive, as an invasive tree. However, she prefers native trees.
Right, okay.
I love that tree. But Andrew knows what she's talking about. What else?
That's it. I'll try. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final review of the Market District at Crab Apple Reliant Office Building Site and Landscape Plan.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
All right, go ahead, keep going.
With staff's recommendations. Yes, that's all.
Good. I'll second.
All righty, we have a motion for approval with staff recommendations. And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll see you then. Okay. All right. Jackie?
Yes.
Is there air conditioning in here?
No kidding.
Can we, we're going to be here for another two hours. I'd love it if we could maybe turn that down just a notch or two. And I apologize for interrupting the meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
I'm always freezing.
So, all right, so moving on.
All right.
Thank you, Steve, also too, for your time. Moving on, we've got final reviews, 8D Market District at Crab Apple Reliant Office Building Building Review.
So as mentioned earlier, we receive in March, a new proposed Reliant Office Building in this new location, and in front of you is the 3D model of the elevations of the building. So one to the left is the frontage view, and the one to the right is the parking lot view. So this view here is the one that's facing the neighbors, and this view here is facing Heritage Walk. All right, so let's look at south elevation. This is elevation facing Heritage Walk. Let's touch a little bit about materials. So predominantly, it's brick and some natural stone that you will see here. And the rest, you have painted metal paneling detail that you can see under this windows, painted millwork and molding. You also have signage, also some fiber cement. This is actually to conceal mechanical devices on top of the roof, and some good detail here, cornice made of glass reinforced fiber. West elevation, this is the elevation facing internal road. So as you would get inside a development, pretty much same materials. The only thing that's changed here is that there's now some brick detailing, herringbone, and then as well as the size of the window have been reduced. Instead of a, and all of this are picture window. If you look at the one facing Heritage Walk, it's like a bigger window as far as size, and then this one is reduced into two picture windows as far as two sides. And there's also some light in, or grids in this window. Okay?
Bless you.
North elevation, this is facing the rear parking area because it faces, it's the back of the building, it faces the trees to the north. There's less detail as far as architecture. They've added some green wall trellis to add some architecture detail there.
Jackie, does that meet the fenestration? Is that the right word I'm looking for?
Uh, yeah, this one doesn't meet the fenestration, yeah, yeah.
It does or does not?
It does not, so. But in fact, when we look at the code, there's nothing, and I could possibly miss it, but I didn't see anything that talks about the fenestration. And the Deerfield Highway 9, it states that, but not for the Crab Apple.
Could you explain what that means?
Sorry.
Could you explain what that means?
Uh, fenestration, so like in Highway 9 or the Deerfield Form Base Code, we require, you know, fenestration at least 75% or something like that.
How much window?
How much window, how much door, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So for this one, as you can see, you don't see any, not a lot of window.
So there's no fenestration requirement for street-facing?
Yes. So for Crab Apple, and then I can, I can have double-check back the fenestration for Crab Apple. But when I reviewed the code, I didn't see anything specific to this.
Maybe that was where I was getting the confusion.
Yeah, because we did one, we did one for that school, the Montessori school, and it's in the, yeah, and we require them.
Because this is going to be the view from the children at the school?
Uh, yes, and then there's, there's those mature trees, you can't see it. And in fact, that's actually a parking space is behind it for the school, so there's not a building next to it. All right, let's look at east elevation. This is the elevation facing the parking area and Lakeside Crab Apple subdivision. So it's a little bit similar to the south elevation that faces Heritage Walk. And there's some, of course, additional of the signs on top of the canopy. Now, not literally on top of the canopy, but it's against that, that moly, or the, the iron ore paneling here. So the sign is against the panel. And similar to what was approved two years ago, it's the same material schedule. We look at exterior paint colors, you have nebulous white and iron ore. Other materials include cornice, aluminum soffit, natural stone, brick, or brick walls. And then you have the wall-mounted exterior wall sconces. And this is the lighting that does not meet the standards where we mentioned a 45-degree cutoff. So it looks like when you put that on the wall, you know, I guess the neighbor can see it. So that's one of the recommendations that we did earlier, to ensure that there's a 45-degree cutoff. So building analysis, this is a three-story brick building, 42 feet tall from finished floor to finished ceiling. This meets the code. It's composed of brick and natural stone. Wall finishes and trim work are consistent on all sides of the building. Doors and casing match the building style. Windows and casing match the building style. All elevation have fixed picture, fixed picture windows with divided light. We mentioned earlier about the green wall on trellis. And the applicable standards that we, we reviewed is that Section 7A.417 Architectural Standards. Moving on, we have three-wall signs that was proposed. Flat roof on top of the building, there's mechanical equipment on the roof, and it is screened by a fiber cement panel and casing. It's a rectangular box, box form embellished and enhanced by architectural details, sorry. It depicts traditional massing and materials with contemporary architectural design. Overall composition creates a symmetrical proportion and balanced building. So I mean, the, the design of the building is a simple, contemporary, and therefore, the plan adequately satisfies the architectural standard. And therefore, the plan adequately satisfies the architectural standards. Staff recommends approval with the following condition, conditions. The proposed exterior wall sconces must have 45-degree light cutoff to reduce glare and minimize light pollution. Submit a building permit application. Submit a retaining wall permit application for the proposed four-feet-tall brick wall. An engineer stamp drawing is required. And as mentioned earlier, they're proposing three signs. The code says only two wall signs are allowed. And they need to submit a sign permit application because that is going to be reviewed separately. And then lastly, any deviation from the plan will require going back to this board for review and approval. Okay, so Rima confirmed there's no fenestration requirement in Crab Apple Form Based Code.
Thank you.
So if we recommend the condition of the 45-degree light cutoff, do they have to come back?
Uh, no, they will just have to make sure that whatever lighting that they're going to put on the exterior, it meets that 45-degree.
Is the building signage going to be lit?
Um, not that I know of.
Okay.
That might be a question too for the architect, just to confirm. As far as I know, it's not lit.
Any questions for staff at the moment? Sorry.
Okay. I just want to show you, I know there was a question earlier that this was the approved building for Mayfield Road, the previous location. And this building in fact has underground parking. Okay, that's all I have. And then question for staff?
I'm sure we'll have more, Jackie.
Okay.
But right now, you've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'd like to ask the applicant, come on up and- Anything else to add or share or discuss or?
I'm Tim Slager. I'm one of the architects at Hendrick 1201 Peachtree, Atlanta, 30361. I do one, I mean, we were here, what, a year and a half ago? And kind of went through this process. And we were actually the second iteration of design on that initial site. There obviously were some challenges on that site in regard to topography. And which required that, and it was a smaller site and the topography required that underground kind of parking area, which ultimately came at expense. When this site came available, we're like, oh, this is great. We can do just a freestanding building, also surface parking lot. So it was an ultimate site. We tried to keep the design spirit the same. So in regard to our cornice, the brick details. So in essence, the spirit is the same. There were a little bit different in regards to detailing. Some of that has to do with the Heritage Walk buildings that we're now relating to when we were at that other site. I think the last thing we're extending, that was kind of the front door of Milton, where the circle's gone around. And now that we're kind of, you know, stepped back a bit, took down the details just a little bit, but we still tried again, maintain the, the spirit of it. In regard to the four sides, again, I mean, even like we're talking about the fenestration on the backside. What we did to make this plan work is we actually pushed all the core functions to that north side. So why there's no windows on that side is it's two emergency stairs. It's bathrooms, it's mechanical rooms, it's the elevators. But we did try to actually put the little faux headers in so it looks like an old warehouse, a brick in the windows. And so we were trying to still keep the spirit of fenestration for detailing. I'm trying to think what else that was, but again, I mean, I think it was, you know, it's appropriate. It was consistent with what we had presented and got approved previously. So we're, again, hoping we can get approval with it today. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Do you know if the building signage is going to be lit?
Would not be eliminated, no.
Okay.
And again, to your point, I mean, if two's required, we might go to two. I think we were, we were trying to show, and that's another thing, which, there's actually three entries to the thing. What would happen is the one entry on the east side, the owner really wants that for his visitor entrance. But there's also one on the, the west side as well for employees. And there's one south side on the park as well for employees. And those would be card access. But the main visitor entrance would be the, kind of the main entrance with the reception.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, thank you. We'll, we'll utilize you as an asset here in a minute if we need to. Thank you very much. Okay, so seeing no questions at this time, I'll open up for public comment. Okay? So I will close public comment and more discussion?
My only issue was the lighting. I, yeah, trying to speak up for the townhomes over there. If we could get the lighting under control on that side, I think that would help a lot.
Are you okay with staff's recommendation of the?
Do you have an example of what that 45-degree?
Unfortunately, I don't have, yeah, it just shines, yeah.
Okay.
But as far as the specific light fixture, that's something that, as long as it meets, they don't have to come back through us or- They would only, if, they don't have to come back through to get approval for a specific light fixtures as long as it meets the-
Typically, what we do, especially if it, for instance, he's going to change the type of fixture. You know, what we do is we go back to DRB, maybe just as a-
Just for the light?
Just for the light and maybe an old business item. And just kind of like provide you, hey, this is what they've decided.
Okay.
Staff agree with this type of fixture.
Got it, okay.
What kind of fixtures are on the buildings that are currently over there?
Um, I can't remember. I think there's some gusnack and the sconce, the black thing. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
The ideal, because I actually don't mind that light. Um, come.
I have one question for the architect. It says formed metal panel, alternate fiber cement. Is that, are you saying it could be either or?
We're trying to leave that open to, but the intent is it would look like a painted metal panel. But you, you, there are a lot of options out there that are actually a fiber cement that looks very similar. But if the condition is it has to be metal, we'll, we'll go that route. But we just wanted to leave some flexibility in regard to the design detailing.
What, what were you thinking when you say fiber cement? Like Nita Ha or?
Exactly.
Okay.
Hardy.
Not hardy.
Really?
That's not what we, but again, to your point, they're, they're much better looking actual architectural-
Yeah, okay.
Fiber cement panels.
Can you maybe just explain briefly the green wall on the trellis? Like, is that real plants or?
It would be live plants. And thought was just to soften that edge a bit. Because again, that's the backside of the parking that again, has all those core functions. So again, there's no windows. But the thought was we'd have limestone and do a trellis, just kind of wire trellis with, you know, basically vines growing up.
So is there a planting bed or is it like a-
There, there is a planting bed over there. Again, I'm not sure, we, we didn't show it, I think, on our plan. But that's, architecturally, that would be, again, and if we had to go with actually a planter box, we could do that as well, just to get something. But the intent is to have some live green wall on the backside.
So, and what type of, of plant do you, did they specify?
We would probably use either a Confederate jasmine or Carolina jasmine, something that kind of softened the edge, have a little bit of a flowering element to it and, and just leave it at that.
I don't know. I wish, I wish I could see a picture, like a real picture of it. Like just, it's hard to imagine, the upkeep, I can't imagine.
If you look, actually, across the street at the Old Blind Dog, we did that design there too. There's, there's trellises that go up, on some of the columns that go up from first floor to the second floor. These would be a little wider, but we use Confederate jasmine on those as well. So those, those are actually there. When you get a whole, a hard freeze one time, they may die back to the ground, but then they come right back the next year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, what else? Kind of concerns with the design, the colors? I had one about the- Sorry. The faux wood aluminum soffits, not wood. Is that literally just the soffits up on the?
Just underneath the canopies.
Okay, what was the, what was the decision to have that a different color than that iron ore?
Just, again, kind of softens it a bit, opposed to just having all metal. So having just that little bit of wood just under the canopies. We think it's a nice architectural element.
We've used that, it really does look nice.
Yeah.
It's very sharp.
I like the break, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Any other discussion? Alright, thank you. Okay, um, seeing no more discussion, are we ready to make a motion?
Well, I did just see something. This is calling out honed and polished. Is that on, is both of those, are both of those options on the building or? Okay, just want to make sure.
Alright, seeing no more discussion, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final review of Market District at Crab Apple Reliant Office Building Building Review with the recommendations that staff has put in place.
I will second that. So we have a motion for approval with staff recommendations for the building review. And a second for that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same time? Alright, we got, okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Moving on, eight, new business, we have none. Nine new biz, or old business, we have none. So I would like to make a motion for adjournment.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're adjourned, thank you.
No, 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 no concern on that part.
That was my first meeting.
Nobody stayed to listen.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, let's keep going.
So I will thank you, everyone, for the patience in being here this evening. I will call together our, our call to order our joint work session of the Design Review Board and Planning Commission. To start off, I would like to introduce staff and our board members.
Jackie Jennings, City Staff.
Bob Buscemi, City Staff.
Oh, yeah, Allison Bickers, Cooper Carey Consultant for the city.
Uh, Robin McDonald, City Staff.
Oh, they, they like to tell who you are.
Are we doing us now?
RV first. Oh, yeah.
I just follow Jackie's order.
David Jackson.
Oh, okay.
Off the via.
Camia Coker.
Celeste Jackson.
Danielle Gagny.
I'm Vic Jones.
Trey James.
Kurt Nolte.
Judy Burns.
Brian McNeese.
Fred Edwards.
Great, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to our review and discussion of tonight's draft Deerfield Urban Design Manual. Allison, Bob?
Well, welcome, everybody. I did have a little speech here to recap, but it's so late, I'm knowing people throwing tomatoes at me here. But you, you all know that approximately a year ago, we embarked on the implementation study to reactivate the Deerfield area known as Destination Deerfield. We've engaged the community, we did surveys and public charrettes to integrate. We got some great feedback and everybody's pretty happy. We worked with landowners and developers on potential build outs. We created amenities, some of the big amenities, they wanted a trail loop, that was a public trail loop and a private trail loops within developments when they occur. You'll see a lot of that in the manual. We created incentives with the code text for trails and open space to encourage those as a way to sort of kind of offset the cost of those. And it's either the city builds it, or we just give a credit to the developer to do it, and that's how the city elected to do it. We studied ratios of residential, non-residential to attract investment, and what's that correct balance? So we've got like a 70/30 in the T5 and a 60/40 in the T6 ratios that used to be 50/50. So we've kind of settled on that. Community feedback on architectural styles and uses, you know, they like rooftop dining, they wanted golf cart access and parking, they wanted usable open space and plazas. So a lot of those items that the community gave us feedback on is in the design manual as a result. Everybody knows the city's assuming the lead on the redesign of Highway Nine from two to four lanes. We're going to have enhanced pedestrian crosswalks, maintain existing mature landscaping, we're going to lower the speed limits, narrow the lanes, landscape the center medians. I think that was a huge, a huge success story, and the outcome of this implementation plan is taking over the Highway Nine. So tonight, we're just here to review any comments we have on, specific comments on the design manual. I think it's a nice manual, came out good, it's an easy read, it's got a lot of great table of contents, it's easy to navigate. We gave it to a lot of people that were just, you know, sort of, you know, not in the industry, and, and I let them read it and just said, hey, can you navigate? Do you understand what it is we're trying to do? So the whole intent is that we do code text amendments that it's very specific. But then we wanted this manual to kind of guide users on what it is we're looking for as far as look and feel and how things should be set up. It's not code, but it's going to be adopted through resolution by the council, hopefully on May 19th. And it's really supposed to be like kind of a guide, so that we can kind of tell people, look, that's not what we're looking for. You know, and, and just be a little bit more specific, because up until now, we've been kind of having to really put a lot of energy and work with developers to keep saying, no, 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 no. We're finally saying, no, let's just do a manual, I could open up the book and say, look, this is what it says, it's in writing, we adopted it, and that, that's, you know, we're going to hold firm on it even though it's not code, that's the intent of the code. And that's really what we're doing. I will say, the code text amendments and the resolution is manuals hopefully will be adopted on May 19th at the, at the council meeting, which is not Monday, but the Monday after. And then future engagement will be these boards. You know, when, when developers, and we have several that are right in line to come in, because the moratorium is going to get lifted on the 19th, and these developers are fighting at the bit to come in with their proposals. The Planning Commission's going to look at them, and, and DRB is going to look at them. And I think Planning Commission's going to, you know, be reviewing plots and what these things look like and how they're laid out. Things like, you know, concurrency, you know, how many houses do you build before you start building commercial buildings and trying to get the balance on the lot? So a lot of good technical feedback, we're going to really lean on Planning Commission to give us that feedback to say, yes, we think these site plans and these plots are meeting these standards. Because, you know, I think the community, especially Milton, is extremely engaged in seeing plots and seeing what's going to get built. And then DRB, huge heavy lift there too, with LDP's site plans, landscaping plans, architectural building design. These, these are pretty big projects, and they're going to come in with multiple buildings, there's going to be a lot. And there's going to be an array of buildings, there's going to be hotels and office buildings and multifamily detached houses and townhouses. Multifamily, which we don't really, haven't really reviewed a lot, but, but I think multifamily is going to be a big component here. But he's competent getting some component of multifamily. So it's going to be something I think we really have to look at very carefully, because we want to make sure that that looks nice and fits in Milton. So we do have a lot of interest, things are looking good, and with that, I'll open it up to any questions on what you, how you feel about the design manual, wants to start, but.
Well, can, can I make a quick comment too, is, is two years ago, I think majority of the people that I spoke to, when we kind of started getting privy of this insider information, if you will, right? I don't think many of the people I ta, I spoke to actually knew about Deerfield, right? And, but now, when, when I kind of discuss it and, and, you know, there's a vast, there's a more knowledge now from, from our citizens, I think, that know about it. And not only do they know about it now, they're extremely excited about it. And I think that staff, Cooper Carey, you know, has done a really good job of A, broadcasting it, giving feedback from the citizens, setting up these open houses, public forums, and then also the implementation of this design manual and how this has gone about with, with the developers, working with them, with staff, with Highway Nine, with DOT, I mean, all those things. So I just kind of start off by saying, I, I think that staff and Cooper Carey, you guys have done a great job at this, A, making people aware of it, and B, giving them feedback, and then C, the end result, I think, is, is going to be phenomenal. So that's all I got to say to kind of start off with, so, thank you.
And I want to commend the, the staff that, and Allison and Cooper Carey and their subs that worked on this. I attended many of the public sessions, not all of them, but almost all of them. And I think this document captures the input from the public, which I'm glad to see. There was a lot of consensus, as well as some of the input what we had previously of, I like this, I don't like this, I want this, I don't want that. So I thought the document did a great job of capturing the essence of what the public's input was of, and many of the public that lives in and near Deerfield and, and others in Milton, as to what they wanted to see the area grow to be. So I can commend you on that, and I think it's exciting to see the first steps. I know we, we reviewed the actual code changes in our planning commission last week. The days are running together, and so it's exciting to see this next step. Even though I had flashbacks of the hours we spent on UDC and reading the document, I, I think it's an exciting and important step forward, so thank you very much. Not that I don't have a few comments, where I think it could be a little better.
We would expect nothing less.
Well, that is the purpose of tonight's meeting, so feel free to jump in and.
So how do you want to do this? Do you want to kind of go section by section and see if there's any comments? What's your preference? I, I have, I found a number of typos, which I have emailed in as I found them. I don't feel like I need to go through those typos here tonight and let everybody know that I used to be an editor of my school paper. I see those things. So, as well as having it beat into me when I was a consultant. So I don't know if you want to kind of say, you know, talk about section one is about this, do we have any questions or comments, or if you want to go page by page, what's your preference?
Well, let's, we should walk through the document, so if you want to go section by section, and then we can go within, dig deeper into a section. I want to make sure we cover it and we hear everybody's input.
So to that point, there, Bob, is, is I've kind of gone through it, but I haven't, oh, not page 177, right? So my thing is, 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 is that this is really the only opportunity to kind of go over that? Or if we see some stuff or email or back and forth, I mean, how, how do, or is this kind of that opportunity to really do that? Saying is that it's going to go into law?
I'd like to get any feedback we can. Now, if you do notice something weak and it's edited wrong or something, you'd feel free to send it to Robin and I and get it to Allison, she'll just make the correction, so.
Okay.
We, we have been looking at this document several times, so I'm kind of hoping that we're almost there, and it's just the editing and stuff like that. I think the overall intent, what we were trying to achieve with the document is, is laid out very well. I think it, I've reviewed it a zillion times, read it, and, you know, I, I think it's really kind of walking people through it, but let's, why don't we just briefly, like, walk through it, so.
Well, well, to that point, and, and sorry to cut you off, is at what point will there be amendment, or so you said it's, it's not necessarily code, however, it's kind of the, the, this is, this is the way we want it done. Will there be later on amendments and stuff like that to it that are site-specific, if somebody comes in with something different? Or it's like, hey, it's this or nothing?
Well, it's adopted through resolution.
Is it a hard line in the sand?
The code is definitely the code.
Yes, got that.
Change it, this document can be altered, and we would just, you know, make the changes and go back. And it's not like code text changes, we'd have to go back and just let the council know what we're doing. But I'm kind of hoping, especially in the initial phases, we're going to have a lot of projects that come in right out of the gate. I'm really hoping, you know, that, and we've been kind of using this document informally with those developers, kind of testing it and saying, okay, it's, it was really a good thing that a lot of developers stepped up and showed me what it was that they were looking to do. Because then we looked at them and said, gee, these are some things we just don't really want, Milton. And other things were, were good, and we said, well, let's see if we can implement them in there to make sure that we, we reinforce those ideas. So we, we did look at them and kind of said, well, we know what we want, let's see what people are offering, and then we kind of blended the two. But this, this is really a result of that. But again, now, you know, once we codify stuff in the code and a developer reads it, if they feel like, oh, wait a minute, you know, I could sneak in something here, I could get some more density, I could get some more this or that, they're going to take advantage of that. I, I don't see them not, I think everybody's going to read it a million times and scrub it and say, oh, let me see if we could do that. Well, I think we've caught most of these, you know, I'm really trying to catch a lot of this stuff, so.
I think I, analogy of this is, I know it's kind of hard to understand the concept, but I think of the, the code, the text that we've been working on, that'll be approved on the 19th, the, the nuts and bolts of it, I consider that the skeleton. And this is like the meat, right? It's, you know, it's the skeleton that's holding everything up, and this manual is kind of, okay, we're describing, it's the meat part of, of what's underneath. It's just, it's a guide, it's a help, it's, you know, to describe what the code says, but in a much more graphic and detailed way than just some words that, you know, it shows examples and, right?
Or just more thinking along the lines of, of, what, what is that process if someone does come up with some gray areas or something in here? Is it just more variances, right? Or is it, or is it like, hey, there's no variances?
Yeah, so no, this is, this is not ordinance, this, it's, i- if there's issues that come up with the ordinance, the Deerfield Form-Based Code, the amendments that we've made, then that's something. And we don't change code very lightly, just, you know.
Right, right.
But as far as this book, this handbook, you know, if there's some things that need to be tweaked and changed, we just amend it and then adopt it by resol, you know, update it. Maybe we'll do it every couple of years and have a, you know, second edition or whatever, and then have it adopted by resolution. So it's not something that, this is not code, it's the Deerfield Form-Based Code and the associated chapters that have to do with the, within the UDC, that has to do with Deerfield. So that's, I mean, I think I had like four pages, the Planning Commission reviewed it a couple of weeks ago. I mean, we didn't begin with so many changes, but as we got into the, into the document, then it just kind of snowballed, and we, I think it was, like what Bob said, very helpful to have these scenarios with these potential developers, because it helped us to kind of put it in the real world, you know, because I think, we'll think, oh, this sounds good, or let's do this. And then we start applying it, and it's like, eh, let's do it this way, or let's, you know, amend it. So it was a really good practice of, you know, we have people who are excited to redevelop or develop their properties and, you know, we've made no promises or anything, but it was a good practice of putting, you know, it in, you know, the rubber meeting the road, right? To really understand how the code works, so, yeah.
Okay, is, is the goal of this to bring this into the comprehensive land use plan, since the comprehensive plan has stood up in court, it's, it's stood up to developers and, and all the challenges to it? With the goal to be incorporate this in, because we've got to be, we're coming up on a new update to that, correct? Would, would that be a good spot for this, to give it a little more teeth?
Well, if you want to speak, I, I don't see it as being the codification, it's really the code, the Form-Based Code and the UDC, but it's just, it's definitely a guide and it's a support, you know, for the overall plan. So definitely, I'm sure it'll be mentioned in the updated comprehensive plan, that this is a, a project, and this is one of the documents that came out of this project, so.
Do, are there other design manuals in the city of Milton, like for Crab Apple or for Birmingham Crossroads?
So there, so when Fulton County created both Crab Apple Crossroads, which is now dissolved, and now this Form-Based Code, and then Birmingham Crossroads, there was a design guideline for both of those, and we do have the one for Birmingham. It's not very thick, it's not as thick as this, but yes, we've had that concept before. And then when we were first a city, bef, we had the Highway Nine overlay district, and then we also had a guideline as well that we adopted. So this is not an, I mean, I think this is much more thorough and, you know, more detailed than a lot of those other document, documents were, and I think there's a big emphasis on the trail system and, you know, alternative modes of transportation, things that these other documents never really looked at, so. But yes, there's precedence of this kind of book.
As I see it, Kurt, that there are portions of this that could be incorporated into the comprehensive plan when we updated this year. But yet, it is good to have this standalone guideline to be able to just say, dear developer, here's what we have in mind. Read it and come back to us and say, yes, I'm excited about this, could I do this? So I think it is good to have that, though I think it would be good to incorporate some of the thinking along the transportation planning and the trail planning and the building use. Yeah, in the comprehensive plan, but not the whole, and maybe reference this document in the plan, but not say, oh, part and parcel, boom.
I'm just looking, I think it's well done, they did a great job. I'm just looking for ways to, how do we hold people to, oh, here's, here's a guiding document, oh, wonderful, right? But oh, now this is part of, you know, if it's in the land use plan, in the comprehensive, then I, I'm hoping it would have more teeth. I'm hoping it would be a little more rigid and there would be less around that. And, and again, taking bits and pieces is one thing, but if we could, it's all together. The land use plan covers, you know, the things we're talking about, it's, I, I just, just an idea.
And I want to add that, I, I still want to emphasize the importance of Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. So say, in the zoning, we say you have to have 70/30. And then the guide says, okay, this is the type of buildings and the block structure and whatnot. But when that plan comes in, how that 70/30 is distributed on the site, no, this plan and the code doesn't say it. Where the uses are, how they're mixed together, that do they they just put all the housing on one end of the lot and then all the commercial on the other end? Are they truly mixing the uses together? There's nothing in the code or in this document that says, you know, this is how we want you to kind of design that site. But it, it is up to, say, Planning Commission to look at the plot and say, wait a minute, you know, where are those uses on the site? How are they distributed? Are they interacting together the way we want them to interact? Are they isolated? Are they vertically integrated? We, you know, there, there's still a lot that you can't really put everything down because you don't know which site it is and how they're going to set it up. And it's the same thing with all the Design Review Board, you got, you're going to have tons of input saying, well, wait a minute, you know, here you have townhouses sitting right next to a big multifamily, you know, complex, and is this towering over this? You know, is it looking like they're contextual, you know, do they belong together? Is the architecture fitting together? You know, seeing the whole site and then the, the, the challenges we're going to have in Deerfield. The biggest challenge is, it's not a standalone site. It's not just one building sitting there. Sometimes you look at just one building, there's going to be people coming in with multiple buildings that they want built all at once on a site, and they're going to say, okay, here we are. And it's going to really be up to the city and the boards to say, is the distribution of the uses correct? Is the location that they're putting them correct? You look at the Verizon site, for instance, there's a lake, you know, what are we putting against the lake? You know, what is the developer doing? Is he just throwing, you know, the, the walls up and, and storage buildings up against the lake and then, you know, or is that the place we want public amenities to be? You can't really put that in here, you can't be that site-specific, but it's up to the boards to sit down and say, wait a minute, you know, we have some natural features, this is how we want them to look, this is how we want the architecture to look and feel, this is how we want to blend it together. You know, what's the human scale? What it's going to look like when I'm walking on the street, you know, and, and experiencing this development? That it, none of this can, it can give you an idea and tell you like with the flavor of it, but when it gets down to the actual project, it, we're really going to have to roll up our sleeves and say, is this exactly what we're looking for and how we do it? And there are building uses like multifamily that the city of Milton has not done since its formation. These are brand-new building types that we're going to be getting hit with, that we've never got hit with before. So, you know, on these other buildings, it's kind of nice because we've slowly kind of developed them, and now we have a good theme going saying Crab Apple, we kind of know what it is, you're looking at a building tonight, you know what the kind of building it is, where, you know, you know, the other buildings. These are going to be pods, they're going to be developments that are coming in and, and it's just, we're really going to have to sit down. So this is only the beginning, is what I'm saying, I, I still need to really lean on all the board members to really say, wait, Bob, we understand from reading this book kind of where you want to be and where the community asked us to be, but now we're looking at specific development potentials and, and projects coming in. How do these uses integrate? You know, where, where, how do we walk to a big parking structure and how do we go from pod to pod? Or how do we integrate from the new public park, you know, to, over to, say, a Verizon site where they have some, some uses, some restaurants and stuff? How do people travel? You know, so it's, there's a lot there. I mean, we could put some skeletons in, but there's a lot of things that we're, we're not used to seeing come in all at once. And, you know, these mixes and how they're arranged, so it's not just the individual. I don't want everybody to think, okay, I'm just going to look at the townhouses, oh, they look nice. It's, it's how do they look overall? What's the overall appearance on the site? And, and that, that's still going to be something that we didn't, can't capture in this book, really, to the detail we want to. And it's going to be up to us, when, when they come in, to really look at it and work with the developer to say, hey, is this really what we want for Milton? Is this really what we want these developed sites to look like? And it's going to be somewhat of a challenge, because we're not used to having tall buildings and when, you know, tall, all right, it's the 40 stories, 80 stories. But in, in, in the city of Milton, you know, having a four-story architecture or eight-story architecture is something that we haven't really seen, those kind of buildings that, that are coming in. So if somebody comes in with an office building and they want it to be eight stories high, it's, this is a building type that we're not used to seeing, you know. So it's kind of like, I just wanted, we can put in some stuff in what we're thinking, but it's really going to be, how does that eight-story building relate to something next to it that's a one-story building? That relationship there, and that's something that we don't have in here. But I think when we look at lots, when they come in and flats, you're really going to have to dig into the uses, the association, how they're just positioned on the site, how do they interact with one another? What gets built first, what doesn't, from a concurrency standpoint? That's what, you're going to be dictating all of that as a board. And, and DRB, you're going to be dictating entrances to buildings, the heights of buildings, how do they interact? What's the, what's the street plan? How do people feel when they're walking by these things? You know, are we really going to be doing window shopping? Are they just restaurants? Are they really retail in a sense of retail? I mean, you know, and everybody's going to come in asking for a ton of housing, because that's all they care about is housing. That's really what they want. But what the city really wants is this mix, and they really, we really feel like we need to have the importance of, of that retail. Those are things that we can go through here and look at quick, but it's really going to be up to, up to these, these boards to really sit down and look at this specifically as the projects come in. And then hopefully I could show you the other projects. So if multiple projects come in, I think what I'd like to do is tell everybody, look, do a, like a, a little like DRB does, you know, a courtesy review, so you could see multiple projects coming in, so you could say, what is, what is this lot doing? What is this lot doing? What is this lot, you know, how does it all work together? Because it's not just the individual. I'll try to get them all in front of you and tell everybody, look, you got to do a courtesy, you got to do a courtesy, so that you can kind of see what's coming in.
Given that my watch is about to remind me that my bedtime is starting soon?
Yes.
And given that you want to get this
Yes.
buttoned up by Friday?
Yep.
Can we, should we go ahead and kind of start some of the section?
Just jump right into it.
And I have something on the acknowledgement page, page two.
Did we spell your name?
You misspelled Kurt's name, but he's, Allison knows to fix that. One of the things I did not see throughout the document, but I think is an important point to make and should be acknowledged, is the citizens of Milton. So somehow to acknowledge the citizens of Milton that participated in the public meetings, that took the surveys, the landowners that took time to meet with us. So I think somehow we should, one, recognize this, because it also puts the context of, this wasn't a bunch of consultants that went into a back room and came up with this. This had a lot of public input and it's really not said throughout. So I think they, they should be acknowledged on the acknowledgement page.
Yep. Thank you, that's a great one.
I'm not going to go through the typos I sent you, so if I find any more, I'll send you. Objectives and Guiding Principles, which is page?
Six.
In the objectives, we talk about the supplementing the Deerfield Form-Based Code. And later in the document, we refer to the Unified Development Code, the UDC, but it's kind of out there, like, the DRB will refer to the UDC, and it's the first time it's mentioned when we talk about the DRB role. So I think it's appropriate to mention the UDC in this opening paragraph somehow.
Yep.
Because I think the, if I correct, the Deerfield Form-Based Code is part of the UDC. So just, if we can just get people oriented, familiar, like, I need to know these things to understand it or set the context.
It'd be nice to have a link in there, too.
Yeah, just to tie it so that when we later refer to the UDC, people are like, what's that? Haven't mentioned it.
And on the UDC, they reference, cross-reference it. A lot of people think about an architect or developer, they're going to look at the UDC and they won't even see this, so they may go ahead and start pre-planning something. And then they realize, oh, they've got to start from scratch again.
I mean, hopefully the, the developers, they know to come to us first and will definitely refer to it. Hopefully they're not going to try to do everything on their own and then plop down a plan to us. Yeah, there, there might be, I'm just hoping for the best, but, um, yeah.
I can tell you, I work with, they usually look at the UDC as their first.
Yeah.
They will miss this part.
Yeah.
I agree, it has to be referenced.
Yeah.
And to that point, I would just recommend when you go to the Deerfield, like, the, to the sub-site, that it has a reference to the design manual and the steps, the development steps. So it could also, this is a question, or does the form that you have to fill out for your pre-application meeting include a hyperlink to this document?
All 117.
How many times could?
There's a checklist, right?
Yeah, there's a checklist. Yep.
And I don't know if page nine needs to refer to the Planning Commission, because we would refer to this in codifying? Or, or, or is this just for the Design Review Board and we don't have to look at it again?
Yep. We, when we, this was, I think in concordance, and Jackie, this is something we developed with you, that it was predominantly for the Design Review Board versus the Planning Commission.
And, and I see it, I see it that way, too. And then all of a sudden, we're starting to review some of these plans when we're looking at preliminary plots or looking at other things, so. But I don't know that you could list all the things we have to refer to, but I do agree that this is primarily for the Design Review Board and city staff. We may look at it, but it's not like I'm going to bring it to every meeting.
Yeah.
If I can mention one thing on this page, it's page nine. Super well done, I love what we're doing, so I have no complaints there. I think as a planning commissioner, I'm wondering, and I have not been able to digest all 118 pages, but I'm, I'm wondering if there are any places in it that are not congruent with the current code, where somebody says, well, the picture shows that I can do this.
I have one of those.
And the UDC says this, which one wins? And you do call it out there in the note, saying the manual serves as a guide, not intended to replace or supersede zoning code. I'm wondering if we should be more intentional and specific that it's, it's used to be a guide, and that any discrepancies always fall back on code. And I, I didn't find any incongruities at all.
I found one.
I mean, good.
Well, transparently, I have not studied the whole thing in that way.
Judy, Judy will find, no, we tried to scrub, and I know Bob scrubbed Jackie, so we've all. We've all tried to scrub, but I'm certain if there was one, we certainly want to make sure that the, a picture's aligned, so Judy, is that in your comments that you?
It's coming, I figured we'd go page by page.
Okay.
I didn't have anything on all the processes. I think those were from somewhere else, so I'm now up to vision and the vision for Milton.
Can I go back? I'm so sorry. Only finishing up the code and really understanding that there are some things that are by right and that I don't think that, uh, it really talks about, talks about a concept plan, and I know this is kind of last minute, but there's really not a process for the preliminary plot or some, and maybe because we already have projects that are by right, it's not going to be a use permit, it's not going to be a rezoning, you know, and maybe throwing in something about projects that are done by right, that they would either just need a concept plan or they would need a preliminary plot. So if it's all primarily, if it's all commercial, then it's a concept plan, but we don't have the alternative if it's residential, you know, and that it's by right. So just, you know, just to throw that in. Does that make sense?
That there's on the preliminary plot, should we put something in here that says that we really encourage, we want to see the architecture?
Well, I think, there's nothing speaking to preliminary plot, and I apologize for not mentioning that, but.
Not just mentioning preliminary plot, but to add.
Yeah, like concurrency and architecture.
Yeah, concurrency and the architecture included in that, so that Planning Commission doesn't have to keep asking people for it, it's part of the submittal.
So because, like, for an example, in the code, it says that you can do townhouses in T5 by right, so long as you have commercial. So that means it doesn't have a use permit, and what that means is that, that it's, especially when it's combined with commercial, it's going to be a preliminary plot, it won't even be a concept plan. And so it's just trying to mention that that's the other option for development.
Okay, so can you and I work together and verbiage for that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm throwing this.
Yep.
Say that we want architecture in there and, you know, the things you want in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good catch, Robin, thank you. On the vision?
What page are you?
Vision starts on page 12. I didn't have anything, I don't know if anybody else had anything?
I don't.
And then there's the map of the study area. And then we get into the definitions of the four sub-districts, which later get color-coded.
They were all referenced through GIS, so we know exactly where the line is.
Yeah. Yeah, it, just, I think a note, too, you know, a lot of these diagrams are formatted for readability and the exactness is, also includes on it. There's a, there's another layer that is, that the city staff has that's more exact.
And maybe there should be a footnote that these are illustrative, exact boundaries can be found here.
Can we put a note about that?
So I had nothing on the sub-district map, so I'm ready to, unless somebody else did, I'm ready to get into mobility network.
What page was you?
Why, we are, we have jumped to page 19, we're just flying, Fred.
No, that's okay. We hadn't got to 21 yet.
No.
Okay.
So one of the comments that I had here is that when, it's obvious that some sections were reviewed by the transportation people, because they called it State Route 9 consistently, and the rest of the document calls it Highway 9. So pick one.
Yeah, that, I made a note, so we'll do a find and replace.
And sometimes it's SR, space 9, sometimes it's SR9.
And then it's.
Sometimes it's State Road 9.
Yes, right, yep.
But it's, it, it's consistent within the section, but it's inconsistent in the document and I think it would be better to be consistent.
Does anybody have a preference on which one we should just pick?
Your maps all say Highway 9, you might want to stick with Highway 9, so you don't have to.
Yeah, I, I think that that's how the community were, I think, just the vernacular is Highway 9, yeah.
State Road 400, but it's Highway 9, yeah.
Don't go past 21.
I'm not, I'm on 20. One of the things that I found is, we've done a fairly good job of showing where the boundaries are with the little red dash line for the study area. But now we're just talking about trails within the study area, or maybe they show interconnectivity. And the, my recommendation on all the maps is, if you're going to show other lines, delete the study area, because it's just distracting, it looks like another trail. Because whether or not, you know, we know this is within the study area, it's guiding, and some of the, some of them then even go so far as to go outside the lines, but I even go so far as to go outside the lines. But I just found that the red, the, the study area boundary were not helpful, though I have to say this, other sections where it was like, oh, we shaded the background, the purple and the green and the orange and the yellow, to define it rather than outline it in red, then I, then I could see the trails. Because I look at those red and I say, that's a weird trail. Oh, that's the study area boundary. So I would either use consistently throughout, just use the, the four-color backgrounds to kind of highlight the areas so that the mobility and the trails pop better and don't get distracted by another dash line. Then, of course, you can take the study area legend off. Unless somebody else really felt like, no, we need to show the study area. That would be my recommendation because there's too many dash lines. Page 21, Fred?
Well, and maybe it's me, but under the provisions of transportation alternatives, we speak of within a pedestrian shed. Now, do all of us understand that, what a pedestrian shed is? And that's when the people are walking. It's a pedestrian shed. Does that mean that's the area in which retail is covering? Or what does it mean?
Good point, Allison.
So typically, what that means is that's a comfortable distance to walk by a lot of pedestrians. We, you know, it's, it's, um, um, with, you know, you call it the five to 10-minute walk. It's about a 10-minute walk. It's about three-quarters of a mile. So it's really vernacular for sort of most, most people fall within a standard deviation of that's how far they'll walk to, from one destination to another. It could be retail. It could be, um, from their house to their, to the park. It, it could be a number of different things.
Allison, can you just put in parentheses, maybe? There's the word shed. Just note, this is generally the reasonable amount of time that one will walk.
Yeah. But to Fred's.
There's some kind of description to it so that.
I think to Fred's point, we struggled this, with this a lot in the, didn't struggle, but we worked a lot with it in the UDC, trying to make it more readable.
Right.
Rather than introduce a new term, say, within walking distance, 0.75 miles, cycling distance, 1 mile, electric vehicle distance, 1.6 miles, and forget about the concept of a pedestrian shed, which everybody's like, what's that?
Right.
Yeah, okay. That's a very concise way.
Simpler is better, right, Fred?
Thanks, Judy. Yep. Thank you.
Page 22. I had a, the one, I'd like to get everybody's opinion on this. The path linking neighborhoods and activity showing a walled, a path that's walled off 10 to 15 feet from somebody's back deck. Is that a good thing to show or a bad thing to show? Is that what we really want, is a walkway within 15 feet of someone's deck? On page 22.
I mean, if you look at across from Cambridge, sidewalk right is right there. I don't know how the distance.
Photoshop the wall out?
I don't know if it's.
I don't think so.
Is it the wall that's bothering us?
No, it's how close it is to their.
So I would say that this was a, an image that was liked by the community.
People liked it?
Yes. Yep. So that's where it came from. Yeah.
Okay.
I like the fact that it shows, even with a residential standpoint, you can literally walk out your back door and you're on that connectivity path to be at your pedestrian shed.
Yeah. So I think it's.
Walk out your back deck, climb the wall.
Yeah, right.
There are actually gates. There are gates. Yeah. There's gates. This is.
It is wood.
And it's wood. And this is the alpha loop. So this exists.
It looks like the alpha loop. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, and I think how to think about it is that this would, these would not be, the, the loop wouldn't come after the, the townhomes. The purpose, I think, would really be that this is illustrating a condition where it would be.
A choice.
It would be a choice, and it would be constructed simultaneously.
Yeah. So the, you know, that there are people that want to be able to walk out their back door and get on the sidewalk and walk to the grocery store. Okay. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to, I'm fine with y'all being fine with it.
It's a, it's a good question.
Allison, when you say choice, you mean choice for the developer to actually put this path?
No, choice of who would like to live in that condition. Yes. But good clarifying question.
All right. I'm going to, Judy, I'm going to interrupt real quick. I have to head out. I have to board a flight in less than nine hours at the airport, so I'm going to head out. So, but Allison, I think this is great.
Thanks.
I think everyone has done a great job. And Judy, you are very thorough, and I appreciate it.
You should have been here for that many pages of the UDC to 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have been.
Yeah. Page 23 on, continuing on multi-use trails, design and implementation.
Mm-hmm.
I have to say, the picture here, which I think is the same trail, looks a little, this one looks okay. This one doesn't, didn't say, oh, I wouldn't want to be that close. But it's the same trail, same, same picture. Yeah.
Oh, wait, on 23.
The bottom of 23, I think, is the same place as what we saw.
Oh, it's, it is a slightly different location, but yes, similar scenario. Yeah.
Yeah. Any, any questions on the diagram on 24? Again, those red dash lines are not a trail.
Yes.
Anything more on kind of the trail concepts? I think there's some more details later about how the materials for the trails and things like that, but the, or the concept. Civic space. Page 25. I maybe didn't get as far, but on the ba, bottom of 26, there's a reference to parks. And I know in, in working on some of the, you know, sessions, Bob was very much about along the major road, we want linear parks. And do we capture this concept of linear parks sufficiently in here? And the, and what a linear park would look like and where it would be?
Hope we have an illustration.
Well, I think part of, part of what we, what, what also is kind of in the mix here is the concept for Highway 9. And we didn't want to get out ahead of, like, the, the timing of how those negotiations were working. So we wanted to leave.
We codified linear.
We codified it, right. The design guidelines really need to respond, I think, to the Highway 9 final design so that it is easier to implement.
We're having linear parks even.
Yeah.
I think we need an illustration.
Yeah. Okay.
Even if it's not a picture, plan view, architectural plan view, or something, right? We should show the fact that the sidewalk, the public sidewalk is internal to the park and what the park would look like.
And I, I think.
I think we need an illustration of it, maybe even a picture. There are some examples, even the mayor had shown the park that he liked. I, I think we should show it.
Yeah. And also, too, this concept of when you, when you use the word parks, people think more Bell Memorial Park or Legends Park. And I think we need to get this idea of parks, including linear parks, that, you know, even Freedom Park, to me, is somewhat of a linear park. Not Freedom Park, what's the one there on?
It is.
It is?
Freedom.
Freedom Park. That's kind of like a linear park. It's not very big. Yeah. And it's along the walkway.
But we should show an illustration because the whole idea was to take the public sidewalk and integrate it into the linear park so it, it takes it away from the roadway.
Right.
And I think we should show that as an example. We don't have an illustration of that.
Any comments on 27?
No. Back up to 26.
Back up to 26.
And I keep picking on words, I guess. But in the picture on 26, bioswells intergo to civic space. Or do we, I'm lost about what that means.
The alternative to like storm detention and stuff like that, you can use it, get kind of a nice-looking.
Like a stream?
Vegetation, yeah.
Like, just.
Rain garden.
Okay.
Done in a way that, that is utilized as kind of like retention and detention.
Okay.
Done correctly could look like a.
Oh, it sounds great.
Yeah.
Moving forward, page 27. Now moving into the sub-districts. North Deerfield on page 29. And then, and here's where you can see kind of the color shading, that even if you eliminated the red dash lines on some of the other maps, you still are defining the study area through the sub-districts with the light shading in the background so that trails or roads can still pop. North Deerfield, purple. On page 30, and then moving to page 31.
In North Deerfield is single-family detached, small lots, commercial-like, commercial. Most people probably going to come in with a lot detached. Townhouses are no longer permitted. Well, they never were, but now we're out still. No multifamily.
So page.
Want to put townhomes behind.
That was an exclusion that we had for the five-acre at the time.
That's right.
But we, that is in, but we have since made the Code Text amendments. I think these vested in might not be, I don't know, but.
Grandfather.
On page 30, the, the picture, oh, there's my bedtime reminder. On page 30, the picture there says residential facing linear green. Is that a place to show residential facing linear park?
Yeah.
On page 31?
Page 31.
Page 31, yes.
Yes. But I was, I, I was looking at the same picture. Yep.
Are we in agreement that that picture is?
Probably not the right architecture, is it?
Yeah. I just, I don't like seeing those, that example of the houses. I know that they're showing.
So I made a note to change this image because it also has three stories.
Yeah.
But to an earlier point, I think we can find an image that says residential on a linear park. We have some images like that.
I mean, if we're getting into semantics, is that a one to two, one to two-story with a basement?
So basements and attics don't count. But it's not like a raised basement, like some of the houses in Crab Apple.
Well, it has to have, what, 50% underground to be considered basement?
Right.
I think that push, this probably pushes the limits of being what's comfortable to show two stories.
I think there's some real, well, I was going to say it's not fronting a green. There's a road. And I was going to say there's some stuff in, over this way. Can't think of what it's called. But anyway, I was trying to think for you what might be on a green.
Okay. So I think there's a general recommendation to change the picture to be more like, architecture we want to see, use it as a chance to highlight a linear park and make sure the trees are the right specimens.
On that, on that 31, um, Bob, you brought up, I didn't want to, but the five-acre, this describes our north entryway. And if five-acre is approved, or we have it as preliminary, but that'll say townhomes is our entry.
Well, I mean, the entrance is way further northwest, northeast than five-acre.
Our entry would be, I mean, saying. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. But Fred, you'll remember that while it's grandfathered, we changed that code.
No.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on page 31? Page 32, talking about mobility. I, I had to get a map out. The description on the first bullet is, I had to look at it because you're actually talking about the curb cut being on the south side of Highway 9, where there isn't an intersection with Creek Club Drive yet.
Correct.
But I think you're talking about extending Creek Club Drive. So when you look at this, Highway 9 intersects Creek Club Drive on the north side, but it does not currently extend to the south. And I think you were trying to say, oh, we want to extend Creek, Creek Club Drive and then put a shared curb cut on the south side of 9. But the way, I, I was sitting there with maps and then going, oh, they're talking about the other side of the road. Because right now Creek Club Drive only intersects Highway 9 on the north side. So maybe at the, the south side of Highway 9, across from the intersection with Creek Club Drive or something to that effect. Because I was sitting there with a map going, where is this going? Yeah.
I'll look at.
Since that point, developer comes in, set up, says hazers, this is not law.
That's good.
So, uh, like even I was just going page by page now, back through this thing.
Yes.
So that's why I was kind of asking at the very beginning of, who is the sheriff? Ball or is it just back to the code? At the end of the day, if there is some sort of discrepancy or contractor developer brings up, staff will kind of look at that, take that interpretation. That's something that's going to have to go in front of a board or, that makes sense?
Well, I think it, we already said that the code would take precedent over.
Right.
Right.
Right. So something like that, if there's just, you'd say south side and it's the north side on there or something like that. It's not, this, this is a, or in law, it's just.
Right. And I think, you know, it's, it could be like a living document in the sense what I mentioned before, maybe every couple of years we, or, you know, we just keep track. If there's issues that we find, we'll just take notes. And then every, you know, 18, 24 months, we'll go and amend it and then have a new, a second. months, we'll go and amend it and then have a new, a second addition.
So a developer can't say, well, no, it says it right here.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, no, this isn't, you know.
Yeah, no.
And, and I would say a lot of these mobility, a lot of what's in the Mobility Urban Design Manual, it's not just for developers, but it's also for the city to, you know, it's like the mobility plan, the trail system plan is actually, they're using this as a guide to influence the work plan and big idea on how they make decisions and implementation on public sector side as well. Right, Bob?
Sure.
Yeah. So, you know, that point is as much about also how the city then thinks about the Highway nine design and where hopefully, you know, I think the hope is, is that, you know, one day there'll be enough there, there to get a lighted intersection perhaps, although that may be down the road, we can't promise that, you know, it's starting to kind of think about how do you overlay some public and private infrastructure that make, that fulfill the overall vision? Does that make sense?
Anything else on page 32? 33, which is talking about a mobility plan for North Deerfield. I do notice it's calling for some signals and pedestrian signals premature, or is it good to put in here? Given that they're still redesigning Highway nine.
So this is in concurrence with what the plan is. You know, there may be an update when Highway nine is done that you want to say, oh, we've checked all these boxes, now what's the next layer improving pedestrian safety and activity?
I have a usability comment. I think, I mean, with a PDF, most people are going to appreciate having like the hyperlink. You kind of, there's a section, I just noticed throughout the document so far, there's references to like section 4.2, but you can't click to take you there.
How's, and I think some of it is how it's going to be.
That may be added at the end, hopefully?
It would be added at the end, but I think it depends on how it's posted on the city website and the like.
We can definitely look into it.
Yeah. It's not, I think that's a good point. I think.
Yeah, and the UDC, we have a lot of hyperlinks.
Yeah.
So you can jump back and then go back.
Yep.
Good suggestion. Page 33. Anything else there on the trail heads or the lights? Now we're moving to central Deerfield. Basically goes from Bethany to just south of Stone Creek Church. Any comments on 34? 35?
I just, again, the picture was.
Yeah.
One to two story.
It needs to be two, three.
36?
Yep.
Yep.
Maybe 36, yep, there's your three stories.
Right.
Well, measured from the eve?
It is, yeah.
This is, code measures one to two stories from the bottom of the lowest eve. Plans meet that. While it may appear to be three story, so it does refer to measurement from the bottom of the eve. In fact, these do actually meet that.
At 40, at 40 feet, right?
No, so was it 42?
I think it's 40 feet.
Yeah.
So you're saying 40 feet includes that top part that's that back?
No, so the small roof line that comes down and that is, that is where you technically meet the definition of a one to two story. But I got to be honest with you, developers are going to bring these in. They're not going to get this two story and that's it. They're going to stack them on there and they're going to do detached. It's going to look like this. Numbers don't work with just a plain two-story residential, not for the land base and price and business. I think we need to be careful.
Right.
Go to this because that technically meets the code. This is just a design guideline and the UDC is the code and these meet those guidelines.
Do you think we need a better picture example?
I think.
They say attic.
I'm sorry, what? No, I think he's just saying that's a bad example of a picture that's like going the maximum.
He, I think he's saying that the picture actually meets the intent.
It actually represents.
It does, but it's probably more robust than maybe we would really like to see. That's what you're saying though, right?
Yeah, but I also think it gives an accurate representation of what we're going to see. I can tell you right now, just as a developer, that same thing you got over here in Echo, that high lots, it what, on a 30 by 50 lot, at the most you can get 3,000 square feet. And those numbers do not work for developer on these, they're going to be bringing products just like that. And I need to get to at least 35 to 38 hundred square to make the numbers. Only way you can do that on a one to two-story dwelling.
Because I'm holding them to two-story in Echo, but they're doing livable attic. Because they need it, they're like, Bob, we need it, so.
Believe the picture.
Well, just want to make sure, is everybody okay with this? Is it two-story or they, do we have to go more restrictive in the code and rewrite? Don't want attic, shouldn't you?
I think you could do that, but I think I'm telling.
Okay. So then this is what we're going to look at.
I don't, I don't think we should change the code, but.
Yeah, we want to change the picture.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like giving fuel to the fire to the developers, hey, you know, whereas maybe it's like, okay, you start here and then we'll let you go up a little bit more. I don't mean physically up, but I'm just like, you know, that's a little. Right, right. Right, and then, right.
When we say it's restricted to two stories, I think most people think it doesn't have that. Unity thinks in their head, two-story, oh, no attic.
Yeah, but that's, then it's almost kind of misleading.
Okay.
I honestly, I don't really care, I'm just saying like that actually represents, I think about a good majority of what we're actually going to be seeing.
Well, I think it's.
Picture that teams it down, but it's going to.
Yeah, we're not changing the verbiage, it's changing the picture. Is there, is there an example of a two-story in Milton that represents?
I think there's some in Crab Apple Station whereby, in fact, we walk by it all the time, we go to lunch, where there's like a 50% basement and then there's also an attic space and it's two-story. So it meets, it meets the requirement of two stories, but it has a basement and has a attic, it has a livable.
And has eight stairs up from the road, Trump porch.
Yeah. Not all of them.
How old are those?
They're being built to.
They're recent, they're like within the last.
Within the last three years.
I mean, they started like four years ago, but there's more being. Crossroads at Birmingham, yeah. I'm sorry.
First floors, it does look like there's a base. I think when we tell the community that we're limiting this area to two-story height and we're saying, well, but it doesn't account basements, it's not counting attics, all of a sudden people are going to get four-story architecture in their backs, right? Because you have an exposed basement.
Right.
And then you have the attic and all of a sudden it's going to look like four-story and they're going to be like, wait a minute, Bob, you thought it was two-story architecture and that's four stories? It's clearly got four stories of windows. I mean, I, I almost think. I, I almost think maybe we should take it out. And not excluding, take that part out. Tell the council, look, it's really, it yields four-story architecture and the boards felt like that's not really fair.
Well, I guess where.
It's two-story.
What that does.
Three, not four-story.
What that does is it forces a bigger width of a lot, like to your point that if you have really narrow lots, that's the only way to get square footage, but it's going to force the developer.
But we did that.
Have wider lots.
It has to be minimum 28 feet instead of 18.
Well, that's for a townhouse, but I mean, even for a detached product, it would have to be even wider than 28 feet.
Who's the Providence development that are doing this? Ainsbridge and, right there, like behind Boise, right? They're building all new ones right now. Ainsbridge, right there. This is the product that they're building.
Right.
Townhomes. So all they're doing is they're essentially taking a townhome product and giving you kind of that same thing, the lot lines or something. I, I don't know, maybe we're just.
I think we should, honestly, because I think the community.
Good point.
Does come in and speak, think that there's a lot of density or the illusion of density. This to me is the illusion of mass. And then people are going to come in and say, oh, look, you know, maybe we do need to force people to go a little bit wider on the lots in order to get what Ken is saying. Because otherwise the community is going to say, look, they're narrow and it does look like it's, I mean, I agree with. I really think we should yield that out of this conversation, we should take that up. I think that picture is going to be what we get, we're going to get a basement and it does look like a lot of mass. But, you know, I, I think we are representing that this is a limited height area. In the southern area, you're allowed up to four stories, so maybe then that's allowed. But in that northern area that, and central, I think we have a two-story limited on height and I think we should hold firm to it.
I agree, because I think we all agree, the code is a code, we're not changing that. I think setting this as an expectation out of the gate is what we're trying to avoid.
But in the code, I think we should take out the exemption for attics and basements not to count.
Well, I, I think that if you take away both, that's, I think maybe the basement versus the attic. Because then, and then you'd have up to the eve and then the attic and then eliminate.
Attic is the one I think that.
I, I think that that code does a, does a justice in pulling those roof lines down. Or it does like even though you've got this bump out, like, you know, covered arty area up top, it's still bringing those roof lines down into, just like the building we reviewed tonight, right? I don't know.
Yeah.
It's like 50 feet.
Right.
But it's 42 foot to the bottom of the soft and then you got four feet of soft and then you got an eight-foot tall.
So it's the same thing with this, I'm just.
That's just the way the code is written.
Even if we just take out attic, I think people, the expectation is that we shouldn't be having four-story architecture. And that's really what this is.
But you still have the right pitch of the roof, you have a pitched roof that, but you can't have any living space there.
But new picture, keep the picture.
I think we're changing the picture.
New picture.
And the code.
Just get rid of the attic bump out.
We're taking out attic.
Okay.
Okay. New picture on 36.
Yeah.
But a savvy developer is going to push for this. But we're not setting the expectation that this is how you should do it in a picture.
The ones that come in, but I would say too, is that the ones that are coming in, they're going to build on this stuff. You kind of, they're smart enough to kind of present products and stuff like that. Those are the builders that you want, not the guy that, you know, brings a four-story, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I agree with you that, take it out.
Take it out.
Let's, let's take it out. Yeah, let's take it out.
So both basement and attic?
Yeah, the last thing we want, at least minimum attic.
Minimize the finished square footage in the attic is what I would do. Which would minimize the roof line, bring the building down.
But, but.
Still give the developer a partial area to finish, because you've got a lot of space in the attic that you can still help get them that square footage that they're going to really want. Maybe you just can't, you know, bump out any kind of exterior.
And if you look at over here in Crab Apple, right across the street, I mean, they have, the basement's exposed in the front, not the back.
Right.
The building looks higher again, looks three-story and I think people are going to say, Bob, I'm in a two-story limit, height limit, and I'm seeing three stories. I mean, the whole idea, if we get nothing else out of tonight, this is a big thing. I think we should, if we say it's maximum two-story, it should be two-story, that's it. We shouldn't be giving away two more stories, because I think that's misleading to the public. Really do, we told everybody it's a max two-story, we should just keep it that way and get rid of attic and basement.
Okay. Through the picture, replace it with something else, but what I'm hearing Ken say is that nobody that's going to put a one-story.
Right.
On that lot.
I think there's more creative ways to do it, like, hey, this is the only square footage, the max allowable square footage. Maybe instead of having a dormer that's 20 foot wide by 50, all max size dormer, you can have an individual dormer on each. So you're not necessarily pigeonholing creativity in the developer and them allowing them to try to get as maximized square footage, because that's the name of the game. But now you're actually focusing more on the architecture that we, which cuts down on the max allowable usable space that they're going to have. Basements, I don't know if we. Geography, I'm just.
Yeah.
Basements or something. But.
Well, we'll come up with something.
The 50% rule.
So we'll fix the photo and we'll come up with some sort of language about maximum allowable attic exposure.
Okay.
On the front, because these things do look pretty large.
Okay, I'm cool with that page.
All right, we beat that one up.
15 minutes later.
Already had something on the bottom of the page, so, okay, I'll try to speed it up.
Okay, we've been at, is that, got your marching orders, Bob? Okay. Bottom of page 36, there's a reference to this area. And the challenge is, is two of those schools are actually in an adjacent area and they're in a different city. So we refer to this area, which I think is referring to the central Deerfield.
Central Deerfield.
But yet we talk about it having three schools, there's only actually one in that area, the others are across the street.
Yep.
And the Alpharetta City Park is across the street. So I think somehow we have to get the idea that those are, this, this area and the adjacency for all of this, because we do have to consider it, but they're not part of this area. Or the city of Milton, for that matter.
I agree.
Anything on 37? One thing I had on 37 at the bottom, I, since we're talking about this area and crossing Highway nine, I would like to see if we can get the beacon where it's showing a median with some landscaping, you know, and how we usually, because this is like, I can't, you know, this is four lanes without a median and I'd like to see more that, no, we're talking about what we want is four lanes with a median where you can have a landing zone, et cetera. Just take a picture of downtown Highway nine in Alpharetta.
Also, I think Bethany Bend is not Bethany Bend Road, it's just Bethany Bend, right? It's just Bethany Bend, there's not a road.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just noticed. All the people in Bethany Bend will be offended if we don't have it right.
Anything else on 37?
You mean the Bethany Bend right of way?
Well, no, it says, doesn't it say road right there?
Yes, it's on the map.
It's on the map.
It's the, it's the label on the map.
Yeah.
Yep, on the map, it's road.
Any other corrections to the maps? And again, here we're showing, we are showing some connectivity to trails outside the system just, you know, so it, we do go outside the box or outside the study area as well as inside. And it's interesting, this actually shows the dotted line study area beyond where the dotted line study area is. No, I'm sorry, that's what I get confused, that's not the study area, that's a different dotted line.
Yeah.
Get away with it, yeah. Okay. South Highway nine, we're moving along, we're into the green. Anything on 39? Anything on 40? Anything on forty? Okay, with the picture on forty?
Yeah.
Looks three-story, doesn't it?
This is-
What's allowable and that's-
It's allowable there.
It's allowable, yes.
Okay, that's a good place for that picture, then.
And actually, that's existing and, yeah.
But it does say on the next page, one to three-story. Um, anything on page forty-one? Page forty-two, is that a, is that more of an apartment complex with the trails? That we are in that district, so we're in T5s, so, okay.
It is townhomes, but, yeah, it could look-
Um, and are we, did we settle on this whole idea of where do we have five-foot and where do we have six-foot? Uh, or where do we have ten-foot and where do we have six-foot sidewalks? Okay, that's clear throughout.
Again, and this is really tied to almost a Public Works list of how we're doing it, so Rob and Tantak-
So, in the middle of this page, um, we talk about having a, what I'll call a mid-road crossway between Deerfield Parkway, I think, north of Coles and Webb Road, south of Target, and that there would be this concept that that golf carts cross there. Here's the challenge, in the state of Georgia, a golf cart cannot cross a state highway.
But I think that that is part of what is under negotiation.
Yeah. One of the concepts, I guess, I had tried to propose, is this idea, can we get an underpass?
No. You do not want an underpass.
Not going to happen.
You're selecting out an ABV to the officer system.
Well, I think essentially what happens is, is that the state does not enforce that law in a lot of locations.
Yeah, but part of the challenge is it's, it is a safety concern, because that's all going to be, you know, four lanes of traffic, um, there, there's residential. The other thing, too, in the city of Georgia, in the city of Milton, we call them personal transportation vehicles, not golf carts, because personal transportation vehicles include golf carts, but have requirements, if you're going to put them, if you're going to cross the road, they have to have seat belts, brake lights, headlights.
Okay, we'll do a change to all golf carts to that.
Yeah, personal transportation vehicles, because you can't just take your golf, your regular golf cart, go cruising around.
And, and I just would say, an underpass, I, I wouldn't recommend an underpass because of safety, lighting, but then also it's a huge structural cost.
Yeah, plus there's probably all sorts of utilities underneath that.
There are a lot of utilities. Steve Rowe has already left, but-
One could have hoped, but, um, yeah, golf carts are an accident waiting to happen. Um, okay, that was, just one of my calls is PTV, but also crossing the state highway. And I don't know if we have to put in there that we need state permission to do that or what?
Working on that.
Okay. Page forty, anything on forty, anybody else on forty-two? Pictures look okay? Not real thrilled with the picture on the top, but I think-
I agree.
Um, anything else on forty-three? Um, forty-four, which talks about the redevelopment in there, I have to say, when I first saw this picture, it was like, ugh. And then I realized all the little things that look like cotton balls are supposed to be small trees, I think.
Street, street trees, yeah.
But a lot of cotton balls. Really didn't get a good sense of what these buildings were. Um, it was kind of like, all the other pictures had me excited, and this picture had me going, what's with the cotton balls? And these buildings look like tents. So, now, later on, there was another picture with this same style that I thought kind of evoked, oh, that's what I'm looking at, but it probably had more green space, but this one was just, ugh, to me. And I don't know if it's because of the cotton balls, if it's because we just have too many of some of the buildings.
But if they change, uh, also green.
Yeah, but even if I try to look beyond the cotton balls-
It's just very linear, I think it's just not soft and natural, so it looks like it could be-
Yeah.
Unclear. And the ones behind it look like glaciers or something, and that's supposed to be like a bunch of trees?
It's thicker tree, yeah, it's basically where thicker trees, existing older trees are.
Since it's the first picture you see, maybe we could do something about the cotton balls, do something about the, just find a, definitely not make it the first, but maybe not, um, no, we talked about vibrant mixed juice, and I was like, mm, yeah, it looks cold.
It's cold.
With snowballs?
It's like a bunch of snowballs.
Glaciers and snowballs.
Glacier, snowballs and, yeah. Anybody else have, anybody love that picture? And I'm just out of my mind.
No, no.
I, I think we all share the same thing.
Sorry to the artist, I probably spent a lot of time on that. Page forty-five, anything?
Can I, can I make a suggestion or request?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. I mean, we're getting late and, and so, is this something that maybe we could do, like a Zoom call tomorrow, or what is tomorrow, Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Or Thursday or something like that? And just continue this off, because at this point, I mean, I want to be thorough with this, but I'd rather also, I'm starting to zone out, to be honest with you. And so, my thought is, is, you know, if we could just get like a two-hour zone or a Zoom meeting or something like that in the next day or two, just to kind of pick up where we left off, continue to go. If I'm an anomaly, that's fine, but I, it's ten-thirty and-
Maybe if we can plow on and maybe get to the end of section three, finish this section, which is what-
I think that's a good, then that would be a good breaking point.
And that'd be a good breaking point. And then we'll just have to figure out how to do that as a public hearing, you know?
Oh, yeah. Well, does it need to be a public hearing? I mean, essentially, we're just-
Yes, because we have a quorum.
Well, what if, um, people just-
Email our changes.
Kind of do what Judy's doing, like, if you have comments, and then send the emails, and it's just going to be tough to be able to get everybody back together.
So, the question is, yeah, because I think a lot of this is, is more editorial that we've talked about so far versus-
Well, no, I think, I think there's some cloud on there, right? So, I, I do appreciate kind of going through it like that, but I'm just saying when we aren't zoning out.
It's, I guess, for tonight, okay, here's my question, are there real philosophical questions or comments that we need to address? Again, and I defer to Robyn and you all, because I think a lot of these comments just makes sense and we would pick up, or helping us just pick up incongruencies, but are there any philosophical questions that we need to address?
The only thing I have noted as my philosophical questions, and I've lost my page references, there seemed to be a promotion of parallel parking, um, which, I'm actually a decent parallel parker, though I would prefer not to parallel park. I like the idea of angular parking, and that seemed to be the second choice rather than the first choice in this area. Um, but it was compounded by, and I would recommend that we get some of the biking community, because they will tell you, like, along, when they were proposing, um, parallel parking there on three-seventy-two, when it was Crab Apple Road, the problem is, they're in a bike lane and people open their car doors and they're toast. And so, they like the angular parking beca, if they're going to be biking, because they're not going to have a car door open in, you know, in front of them. And then the other, the other thing, too, at least the folks around here that I've talked to, they don't like bike lanes on the road, they'd rather just drive on the road. So, I think we have to consider-
So, there's the cycling community, and then there's the bike, your kids to school.
Well, the kids can be on the sidewalk.
But, so I think bike lanes serve a purpose that is different than if you're cycling for exercise.
Yeah.
Um, and I would say that kind of very broadly, generally, angular parking is, is not good in a pedestrian environment, and it also greatly widens the street, that, that street face. Now, I think in Deerfield, the interface of where you would have a bike and where you would have parallel parking is greatly diminished, because you've already got, you know, Webb Road, a lot of the cycling streets are not going to have parking on them anyway, because of the existing right-of-way. It would only be interior to redevelopments, where we would also hope that the trail is constructed. So, there's some-
We did the trail loops, the, the bikes on the-
On the trails versus the intersection of, of having a great need for biking.
Yeah, but a lot of the pictures seem to show this concept of parallel parking, bike lane, traffic, which, um-
I think-
I've gotten feedback that says, cycling community feels that is a less safe option in their mind. So, I just wanted to bring that up-
Okay.
Since it's been brought up to me.
We'll look for those images.
And the one thing where this did not conform to what I understand is code, is you showed the picture of the fence with the cross, crisscross, but the description is three horizontal boards.
Well, I think that we allow either.
Yeah, and Deerfield-
I thought in Deerfield, it had to be the crisscross.
No, it can be any.
Okay, so the description was only horizontal, the picture was crisscross, so-
I mean, we can fix the description, this, you know, to say either parallel foreboard or cross, cross foreboard.
Yeah, because, um-
We're not that.
Because I thought the Deerfield look was more the crisscross.
And I think what maybe that comes from is Deerfield, HOA Deerfield, the proper Deerfield, I think that was their signature fencing versus we're not so dogmatic about it. So, if other parts outside of Deerfield want to do parallel, we're not going to say, oh, you have to do the crisscross, so.
Yeah, I, but I think like, along, you know, along Deerfield, along-
Right, well, it's considered the right, the Deerfield-
Windward, it's the crisscross, so.
Deerfield Association.
That's the Deerfield Association. But as you go for the area in general, we allow either way.
North of there, but I can, yeah, but it, picture was crisscross, language was only horizontal, so.
Right, right.
That was, and, and my understanding in that one part, it has to be crisscross.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be, that's what-
Do you just understand we're going to break and then we're going to just, everybody's just going to-
Yes, so if live stream a Zoom call, I mean, would that count as a quorum or no?
No, I mean, I know we do, maybe we could do like a sub, like, subcommittee of three members of, three members of the planning commission, three members of the DRB, we can check on that, because that's how-
But that wouldn't be a quorum, though, would it?
Well, not of, not of each, not of, not of each one, that's, um-
Yeah, we'll, we'll check with legal and see if, uh, doing it via Zoom and with three members, but we can't have six. Are you saying three planning commission?
Right, right, right.
We can't do that, yep. So, we'll, we'll figure something out as far as how we're going to do this.
But they could write it in, too, right? Touch in there.
Yeah, that's another option, too.
Don't understand it, we could always-
Mm-hmm.
Well, to be honest with you, I think that would be more helpful to me, because I, I thought we were just going to kind of do like general presentation of this, go through it all and stuff. I didn't realize that we were going to be getting down the nitty-gritty. So, to be honest with you, I have not studied this to that extent, where if, if this is going to become ironclad on the nineteenth, then yeah, I would love a little bit.
We, we also, we have an existing Excel spreadsheet that has, okay, page number, comment, resolution, like, you know, what, what the-
Send out that template.
So, I can send that out.
Google Sheets or something or no?
Huh?
Google Sheets?
I could, it can be converted to a Google Sheet.
Well, I, I'm just-
Is it, it's just a spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excel spreadsheet that, um, that the staff has used to, to post their comments in, and then it makes it very easy yet for us to track. It's been picked up, what the, if there's a question, we can, and so that everybody has a public record of how we're resolving each and every comment.
Okay. Am I out of line here by asking that or no?
Great.
I think this is important, but I also value my sleep.
Yeah. So, so what we're going to do then is everyone is going to commit by Friday to get, email their comments to whom?
Well, is it email or Excel, it can, everyone enter into the Excel comment, I would like-
Well, why don't you check with legal, if we gotta, if it's all got to be together, then we could just do the Excel thing.
Yeah.
If it can be, just, we're making just comments based on our individual review on it, then we could just email it, too. However, I know you probably want it all in one.
Well, we can figure that out, I want to make sure what's best for you all.
Everything goes to Jackie, to organize and make sure she-
If-
I'd like Jackie to be the sole-
All comments, just email the records.
That'd be all right, so you manage it and organize and-
She's super excited about that.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
I've heard that six emails have already sent to you.
I look forward to it.
But we're trying to get you out of here early, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so, do you want to just check with legal and then send out an email to us?
I'll get back to everyone with instructions, how we're going to proceed.
Okay, yeah, I, I would, I would greatly appreciate that, if that's okay. Okay?
All right, let's officially adjourn.
Yeah, so, uh, does Judy need to make that or I do?
Either one.
Okay.
So, so are we, and what's the, is Friday the deadline to get stuff to you?
That would be wonderful, because then that way, I mean, I, I know some of, yeah, then that way we can turn this around in order to get it to the-
Yeah.
The nineteenth, yeah, so- To get it to the commission, to this, to council.
I think if these boards can just make a conscious effort to really try to, you know, take out of some time to go through this and, and then send those comments, and let's make Friday the deadline, that-
Right. That gives staff and Allison to, um, make all the changes before it presented to council for adoption by resolution on the nineteenth.
And it sounds like, well, from what we've gone over tonight, most of these comments are, we're kind of sharing the same sentiment anyway, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, like, yeah, I think it's-
Yeah, so, okay.
I have to say, I was reading the words, not looking at the pictures, and I started, when you guys started saying, well, that's not a good picture, I was like, oh, yeah, it's not.
I was doing the opposite, I was looking at the pictures.
Yeah.
I think on Wednesday, it's pretty important, take it back and send it.
Yeah, yeah, so-
It can't be, if you get everything by Friday, you have Monday, Tuesday.
Correct.
Possibly Wednesday, but then-
No, I think we, we have to be complete by the end of day Tuesday.
Get it out.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you get them earlier.
Yeah, I mean-
Earlier the better.
Earlier the better, which I-
Three hours of work to do tonight, and then I'll pick it up first thing in the morning.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Favor?
All right.
All right, good night, guys, thank you.